Well, we have a lot of things to cover. I'm sure that Debbie and Lisa will be joining us here shortly. We have a few other things to cover, but I just want to make sure that we have time. And so maybe we can start on some even that while we're even waiting for them to come. So we want to welcome you to our six o'clock work meeting for city council. Today is Thursday, November sixth. I'm Sherri Bingham, mayor, and we will go ahead and see. Okay, one thing I thought, because I've seen this on some other agendas, which I think is important, that we get free, that just talks about a work meeting. No action can or will be taken on any agenda items discussed during work session. Discussion of such items is for clarification, which is already a given. We know we can't vote on things during our work meeting, but just so we know that. And just one little thing, so we talked last time about changing from hopercity.gov to hoperytah.gov. Because of the shutdown, they are not able to do that yet. So we had to go ahead and renew our contract for our domain. So for one more year, at least until things get up and going, we still will be hopercity.gov. And then when that possibility comes around, then we will see about doing that. But it was something that couldn't be done. This is just for information also too, that was in the your packet. You probably all saw a copy of the J U B invoice. This is for the design of the lift station. This was in your packet. So I received a voicemail the other day from J U B asking about payment on this. This invoice is was for planning services in 2022. This invoice is actually addressed out to you October twelfth of 2023. And so they were asking about when we would be able to do payment on this? If we end up doing some kind of a-
Well, I think we probably ought to review that with Jared. I think he's got all the information on this. You know, when we thought it'd be good for the city to have a design for a lift station rather than just letting one design a lift station the way they wanted, especially when they end up turning it over to the city anyway.
For sure.
So that's what that entails. And I think there was quite a bit of discussion even on the amount that was due. So I think if we check with Jared on that, he'll have all the particulars on that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring this to your attention because like I said, they have reached out to me about getting payment. So maybe even next month's work meeting, we could even have, or maybe by then we can talk to Jared and have a little more information or have him come. And as I started saying, yes, if there if if the time comes when a developer is actually using this lift station, they could pay part of this if we ever ended up participating in a tax increment financing tool. This would also is something that could be included in that. So like I said, this was just for your information because they have they sent this to me again and said, we would like to be paid.
Is that for a lift station you've specifically already built or just a generic lift station?
Generic.
Generic, so-
Yeah, it's just a plan that that-
We can use anywhere.
A developer could use anywhere.
Why would it be five thousand?
Your what?
Why is it not mentioned?
For the design?
I don't know.
Just for the design?
That was just for the design. But Jared said when they did it, just like you mentioned, they wanted something that was could be if we we could use that design over and over. So this would be one, if ever we needed to do another regional lift station, we wouldn't have to have it designed again. And this is a shovel ready, as they call it. It would it would be ready to go. And so, yeah. Yeah, anyway, so that's that's one thing. Okay, one thing I wanted to mention to you, and again, this is just for information. And we can we will have this on our agenda for next meeting. I didn't get this information in time because they just passed this out at our WACOG meeting. So as you know, we have currently, we have an interlocal agreement with the Weaver County Transfer Station. We have had a two-year agreement and we have to give them a six-month notice if we are going to cancel. So had our they've they've been talking about this a little bit in our WACOG meetings because they're they're starting to have some competition and competition. There's there's nothing wrong with free enterprise. There's nothing wrong with competition. The challenge is is that in order to have the Weaver County Transfer Station actually be a viable option, not just for cities to use, but also for our residents to use, it really does take probably a commitment or or most of the municipalities using that. You know, they have done some some improvements over at the transfer station. So what they are asking us to do, because this our current contract will actually expire in December of 2025. And like I mentioned, it's been a two-year contract with with options that you could renew it up to like 12 years with a six months. What they are asking, and that's what this is, but like you say, this I just wanted to present this in well. This will you'll get this in your packet in December for us to vote on. They would like us to do a five-year contract and give them a two-year out notice if we're not going to be using their services. They said six months doesn't really give them enough time to say, okay, if we're going to lose X amount of cities, how are we going to make up that revenue to even keep that station going? Some things that they talked about is some services that they provide for our residents in addition to us just having it be where we as far as doing where we take our solid waste. They are available on Saturdays. They take mattresses, they take tires, there's the waste, toxic waste, you know, some of those other things they do, where sometimes some of the private ones currently do not take those items. If it comes to the point that hello, Debbie. If it comes to the point that they don't feel like they have enough cities that want to use this and they end up closing this down, then our option would be to go to one of these private transfer stations. But then but then our residents do lose some of those services. You know, they talked about green waste. They take the green waste and we talked about this one of our meetings, which is something I think we should talk about in the future. You know, we may have somewhere out in Hooper that we could do a green waste drop off or something. So they would like us, they said, you know, because they said the the mayor said, we've already done our our agendas, you know, this can't get on to talk about it this time. But they would like us to have these on our December meetings. And by then, if you are willing and interested, then we would sign this interlocal agreement with them. But again, this would be five years with a two-year delay.
So with the longer commitment, do they lock in pricing? Or is that going to be adjusted?
Okay, that's really a good point. And that was one thing the mayor asked. They said, if you're going to do this, you have to give us some kind of a price guarantee then. So so let me just tell you this real quick about what their prices are now. So we currently are paying $50 a ton for us to take our our city dump there. There's a private company that just started. And so I was sitting next to another mayor that said they had been contacted and they are offering them a price of 48.50 a ton. But then it had a lot of restrictions. And this mayor said that when he was reading through it, he said, for me, it's not worth a dollar fifty a ton because because they can get you to sign on and say, you come with us for the 48.50 a ton. But because they're a private entity, the next year, maybe they would have us go up to 55, where the county, I mean, the county still has to pay its employees, you know. But one thing is it's an enterprise fund versus so they're not really out to make money off of us, but they do have to keep up with their expenses. So and they also had, you know, passed out that told us about our our tonnage reports. You know, I can include every bit of this in the packet or if any of you would like to see it even sooner than when we, you know, for December, that you might kind of want to know what are, you know.
What is our tonnage average?
Uh huh. So they so in 2024, we had 4,510 tons. They're projected this year that we will have 4,698. And so then they're figuring at the end of next year, it would probably only go up maybe to 4,700 tons. So but but I think this is something, and you know, not to spend too much time on this, but something I think we really should look at too. We have waste management. We're really happy with waste management. I also think, though, we should do some comparison pricing. Because when you talk to all the other mayors, not everybody, there there's different companies. And not saying we won't stay, but I think really to be fiscally responsible, we should do some price comparisons and see. So again, this is something that, you know, you'll need to decide on. But but this will all be information that will be available. But they said if we just kind of introduce it to you now, so then in the next, you know, in December, then we can have this ready to them. And I asked them, I said, does it have to be by the end of the year? And they said, yes, it really does, because they they need to have those contracts in. So any questions, Jim, thing? And like I say, you'll get more on this. This is just kind of a quick.
Um, the transfer station is making money today though, right? I mean, they are they are making money. That was a question a while back. And they had a change in management and they started doing really good, so.
So so currently, the transfer station is breaking even. They are a little worried that this year they might go in the hole a little bit. But they are hoping that if they could get maybe some more contracts that they won't, they are a little concerned about that. They think if things don't change a little bit, it I mean, it's not millions, but it still could be a couple of hundred thousand that they could be in the hole. So the the one person, probably the one you're talking about, council member Fowers, that was there and then I think he left and then he came back. And I think they've done really good and they've I think they've made some significant improvements over there. You know, they've kind of changed where you enter. They have the two different weighing stations now. I think they've done things, I don't I don't know. It's been there for a long time. I I would I would it would seem a little bit discouraging to me to think that Weaver County had lost that. And there are other ones, you know, there was one up by, I think they said Pomontory. There's one out to Willa that are other one, but anyway. So, yeah, okay. Okay, one thing I wanted to talk about was our some ideas that you might have or if you would like us to try to apply for any ramp grants this year. So ramp grants aren't due until January. Last year with the ramp grants, we ended up, we received, you know, the 50,000 that helped with Hooper Tomato Days. We have a grant to do grass around here, the pickleball courts. They have a project that they're going to be working on down at the cemetery as far as replacing the irrigation line. So now we can be hooked into the pressurized irrigation rather than pumping out of the canal, which is something that we need to do. If they get that done, as soon as they get that done, they will start on this project. And we did some power upgrade down at the park, which was along the, well, the very west side of the park, the east side of the bleachers, back where their food trucks were. We had some power plugs there that, you know, were pretty corroded. And the other thing, we have ordered some temper some portable bleachers that are going to replace the bleachers on the south side of the rodeo arena. So and the reason why, you know, the and you are familiar with these grants because you approved them last year, but anyway. So this these are this is a list that staff came up with. And that's the parks kind of came up with today of some things. And so I just wanted to, you know, give you some ideas and let you know. And so one thing they had talked about, and this was particularly particularly with Jared, our our rodeo arena is pretty much to capacity. Tomato Days, we ended up having to, well, it got to the point, we didn't turn anyone away, but we quit charging people because there were no seats. So we told them, you are welcome to come in to our rodeo arena, watch our arena, but you won't have a seat. And some people were fine because we didn't charge them. And one thing that we have talked about with those additional ones on the south side, we will gain between about 80 to 100, maybe even to 200 seats. But one thing that Jared had mentioned about, so this is a possibility, just giving you some suggestions, for a major grant would be to do bleachers on the north side over top of where those chutes are. So then we could actually expand expand our bleachers around and then you could have people sitting there. Some some things that, oh, go ahead.
It seems like we even have room on the west side. Like if we had a property that we acquired just a little bit ago, we could expand the parking into that and bleachers on the west side as well.
The west side would be great because you're not facing the sun. So, you know, as Jared's kind of talked about this, he said, probably we would want to do the north, then get those in and then continue on maybe even another year to do the west. Because somehow you have to be able to have them go up and over the chutes or there's really no way to to be able to allow people to get from one side to the other without having to walk behind the you 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 couldn't. But no, you're right, Brian. And that that would be great because the bleachers on the east side are so nice. But until the sun goes down and it's hot, that's why we no longer kept having the afternoon rodeo because really you could it was hot. And you already read that. Okay, some other-
So would we have to replace the chutes that are on the north end and, you know, where the calf rope, all that would have to be moved to where forward they?
Jared said it would go above, that you would actually have them go above. Uh huh, yeah. So somehow there would be, and I don't I don't know. Jared's actually kind of got a design that he's kind of thinking of that, you know, maybe would would work. Okay, some other things they talked about with parks and recs. And this year with Tomato Days, we did the baseball or the softball tournament, which really seemed to be pretty well liked. We have a baseball diamond down there that could use some repairs with it. Our lights down there particularly are old lights and they can't even turn on all the lights at the same time or we trip fuses. So we have about half of our lights. So if we did LED lights, then we could probably use the same poles. And if we did LED lights, we could probably replace all of those and spend get our lights and spend less and have it be less expensive than the lights we have now. And they kind of talked about it might be nice to have a scoreboard and sometimes you can go to someone perhaps like Pepsi or Coke and see if they would want to help us sponsor. And then just so you've probably noticed, so you have the dirt and then you see where the grass is and the way that they used to water when they flooded it, and you'd be really familiar with this, Del, because you used to do it. But it has kind of that lip, but now they don't flood it anymore. And now they could kind of level that out and probably have a little better. That was one thing they mentioned about possibly doing that. I'm not 100% what this is. Jared just said this lead-up shoots. Oh, maybe maybe it's those same ones. I don't know if you noticed this year in the, and someone can correct me because I'm not as familiar, but how they had the return alley. I think that's what they're talking about. They they had some inside our rodeo arena, they had made some panels to take the cattle back through when they're roping them. So that would be something that would be more of a permanent type thing. They talked about possibly a new or at least a an additional rehab on our announcer stand. Our announcer stand down there is really old at the rodeo arena. They talked about getting another set of small portable bleachers. At times we have need for another set of bleachers for Tomato Days or other events that we might have. And one thing that we feel like it would be something really good to have, we currently do not have a sidewalk from where our large pavilion is at our main park to the restrooms or to our veterans monument. So even though we have a handicap accessible coming into our park on the south side, there is no way then for them to get across there over to the restrooms. They can go across grass, but it would be nice to have a sidewalk there. And I've had a few veterans that have expressed concerns to me. My name is on the memorial, but I I can't get over there to see it. So that was an idea. And another idea they brought up was possibly putting just a small set of restrooms by the pickleball courts. Because of the distance from the pickleball courts to these restrooms and living across the street from the pickleball courts, I can attest to this, there is a hill that gets used quite often as a restroom and probably should not. And and they said, before we did the grass, if we were going to do this, it might be a good time to plan that, that if we did ones out here, but only maybe have it just be two, you know, a smaller one, and then they could hook it into the sewer, plant the grass around it, would be a little more accessible for people that were over there. Those are just some ideas they had. You know, this will be up to you if you want to write, if you want us to work on any grants, if you have any new ideas. These were just some that staff came up with.
So what's the best strategy? How many major grants can you apply for just one?
One, just one. And then you can apply for three parks and recs and three arts and museums. As far as arts and museums, we've applied, you know, for like Tomato Days, the rodeo, the concert. And sometimes we have for Halloween Haunt. Sometimes that's been an easy grant, you know.
So the bleachers would be a major?
Jared said they would be a major if you did that.
Take into account that like it doesn't only benefit our community, but it's everybody around that comes. Okay.
What's the max dollar amount you can apply for?
So so major bands have to be over 199,000, 200,000 is. And the more points you get, the better. And if you have a 50% match, you can get maximum points. One thing, though, that we've done in the past, because I was always really conscious about this, is it's not always cash that we match. We could match the ground, the value of the ground. If our guys did any of the work, you know, like for instance, these bleachers that we're doing, the ones that we did last year, they're tearing them all down. If if we use any of our equipment, that counts as a match. You can't count labor if it's during their regular hours. But if it's after hours, you can count labor. You can count volunteer hours. Every bit of that counts towards our match.
What would it cost to build an indoor riding arena?
Okay, that okay, that's a dream I have.
I know.
So I've talked to a couple of, I have a couple of leads on that, you know, kind of when we've talked about with Jared, you know, if we start at the north side workaround west. But everything we do, we want to not have anything that we would have to tear out later if we do that.
Either to the west or to the piece on the east.
Uh huh, yeah. But it it would be used all the time. And when you're doing the rodeo queen contest and then all of a sudden it starts to rain, you think, oh, if only we had an indoor arena. But that would that would be a, I think if we ever did an indoor arena, it would be a combination of a ramp grant, Utah after recreation grant, possibly going to Utah State, the Utah Cultural, they end up sometimes giving grants. I've had a couple of private donors that said that they would be willing to do that. Hello, they said. So so I think, you know, yeah, I I think that would be something great to. But but again, this is the thing I feel about grants. Grants is money that we might not otherwise normally get, but it also has to be something that we feel like is going to be practically used within the community. And you also, I feel like, have to look at a wide variety. So not so not everybody rides horses, they don't. But not everybody plays soccer. Not everybody plays pickleball. But to have a lot of of wide rounded things for all of our residents, sometimes you have to look at a different set of, you know, things. So so just just some ideas, you know. If you come up with any, it would be good if by, you know, at least by December, if if you're thinking this way, if you have any ideas or anything, if you'd like me to have Jared come in and maybe give you, you know, he knows more about the rodeo grounds than I do. And one thing about an indoor arena, like you mentioned, our our concession stand for the rodeo grounds is, it leaks for one thing. It needs a new roof. It's it's old. The bathrooms down there are old, but we don't want to get new of those if ever we could swing an indoor arena, because then we build all that into with it. So, you know, I I'm not one that likes to do things and tear them down and replace them. And that's why I thought if we think we are going to want bathrooms out here by the pickleball courts, it would be a nice time to probably do them while they're doing all of their landscaping, their, you know, sprinklers and their grass. So just a thought. Can you think of any other ideas or?
What about the, we talked about, uh, what do we call that? Dump station?
Face two.
Dump station, face two over here.
Yeah, they and they've asked that about it too. Are we still thinking of trying to do that dump station? And that because that was something they did talk about, so, yeah. And any, I mean, I think anything we do, and I think any of the things we've had have been a good a good improvement. So, yeah. Anyway, so if you have any ideas, but like I say, by December, it would be nice to kind of come up because those would have to be voted upon and approved before we applied for those grants. And if you can think of anything else with arts and museums, I that's I I I don't know anything else really. You know, we were kind of trying to think. Three years in a row, I wrote I wrote a grant to try to get an electronic message board. So upfront, we could say, but after the third year, they said, we're not, this this isn't qualified. We're not going to give you a grant. Quit quit applying. They used to let people apply for parades and they don't let you apply for parades. You can't do drone shows, fireworks. They can't have anything to do with food or, you know, prizes. So, I mean, they cover a lot of things, but some things they do not. So, okay, any thoughts on anything with that? Okay, okay, so, um, let's see, grant grant, okay, a couple of other things. So it's been, well, I'll just start right from the start. So we've been working on 5,500 West. And we had the initial, so they've kind of started calling these phases. So we had the first phase, which was from 4,200 South down to approximately 3,500 South was the first phase. And that has been completed. Then I believe it was in 2022, we were awarded the money. We did that open house that one night. And this is on 5,500 West that is from 5,500 South to the Davis County line. So the whole thought process along with this is is we probably are going to need to have 5,500 West as improved as possible when they start working on SR 177. And when you apply for any money, so the money that you would apply for now is there is for 2028. So we're a few years out when that money would even come. So J U B, who has always been the ones for, you know, they gave me a list for years that have been the ones that have written our grants. And and I believe we already talked about this before, but they had applied through a grant through Wasatch Front Regional Council to do from 5,500 South then to 5,100 South. So we're just doing a little bit of a chunk at a time and also on 5,500 West. One big consideration along there was also safety. And there's kind of a safety rating that you can get because children along there have to walk to Hooper Elementary. And we know there's the on the the west side of the road, you have the trail, but on the other side there isn't, and anyway. So when JB and when they applied for this grant and it was through Wasatch Front Regional Council, they estimate that this project is going to be a total of $4,051,500 to do that half a mile chunk of road, which seems unreal, doesn't it? So J U B, like they've done for us in the past, applied. And Wasatch Front Regional Council awarded Hooper City $2 million, but that only got us halfway. And we do not have the additional $2 million. WACOG on Monday approved for Hooper City to get the other $2,052,000 so this entire road would be paid, well, I can't say entire road. That entire section of road would be paid for with no cost to the city. So that but but again, that money is 2028. It hasn't been put in our budget, nothing yet, because it's so far out. You know, you apply and you get on that queue. You know, if if they move up the timeframe of SR 177, and it looks like we need to get that road done sooner, they can always, UDOT can always bump up when that money would be available for us. But but now it's 2028. And then when that part's done, then we have left to do from 5,100 South to 4,200 South, hopefully before SR 177 is done.
And this pays 100% of it. Hooper doesn't have to put-
100%.
But then are costs going to be increased by 2028?
Well, when they do that, they build in contingency funds and and sometimes what they do as well. So for example, that that agreement that was signed with WACOG for our half of the portion from, now I'm I'm on talking on 5,100 West, that went from 4,000 South to 3,300 that we had signed and our commitment in our portion was 290,000. What Hooper is going to do that they talked about is not putting sidewalk on Hooper's side to save costs. So if the costs have gone up, there there will only be sidewalk on the east side of the road and not on the west. So so there are things you can do. If cost goes up, I know they've talked about that as well down on the portion from 5,500 South down to the Davis County.
So I was gonna ask, can I look on one side?
Yeah, yeah. So those are some things. So, you know, it's really hard to bid out that far. Because if you're not even getting the money for three, three years, what will the costs be? But, but that's one thing they have, they have said, well, then if that comes, then, you know. Um, one thing about this as well, on this, this, so this is phase three now on fifty-five hundred west, is they want to connect. So there's going to be a trail, as we already know, that comes downward SR one seventy-seven is. And they, and we have the walking trail now that comes down and stops at fifty-three hundred south, right before where the, where they do the trusses. So they want to connect that trail and have it go so it'll connect behind where, um, Hooper Landings is. And then have it go up and connect to where it comes up through West Haven, and then it goes all the way. That's part of their active choice map that they're working on, and that's a big thing too. They're trying to connect some trails. So, anyway, I know this seems like a long ways away. It really does. But, but I was really happy when I went to the WACOG meeting and then they, you know, passed out this sheet. Um, everyone, their, their projects were not accepted, but Hooper's was, and we got every bit that they had asked for. So again, yeah, I thought, I thought that was good. It seems unnerving though, is four million for a half a mile, doesn't it? But, you know, there's some other things in Hooper that that improves. You know, they end up putting in improved storm drains and, you know, some deep drain ditches get filled in, and it does make it safer. And, you know, I, I had to meet with them and try to give them a really good sales pitch why we needed that for safe schools and.
So the slough of forty-one and fifty-five, do you think that would be all filled in?
I would think so, or at least piped over part of that, yeah. One thing about it is Hooper already has the right of way. So when they talk about having to buy land from people, they, they said they're really, they would not have to buy land. So, so I, I'm not sure on that. It, it might not be, I don't know. We still have some money that was applied for, I'm not sure when, um, that, that was supposed to be connecting trails, like that same one I'm talking about, and it still is sitting there that I'll never use. They talked about maybe doing one of those flashing crossing. You could do a cross fifty-five hundred to get from Hooper Landings, you know, to go, see where you connect. That's, it's hard when there's not a connection.
Or street lights.
Or street lights, yeah. Yeah, so, anyway. Okay, let's see. Sorry, we just went off on that. So discussion on agenda items. I didn't know if there's any discussion.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
Just like, so, um, there was an ordinance we were kind of working on, like, it's been probably since, uh, January. It's regarding drug and alcohol treatment facilities. And so we, here's the notes I have, but we need to, um, because we really don't have one. Other cities do, and so what we did is we've kind of taken some pieces of other cities and put them together. Uh, because we've had, we had a situation come up where we're developing one, put one in, and there was, uh, wasn't well received through the public, and we didn't have any ordinance to, to kind of dictate the parameters of it. I'm not saying we want to exclude it, but we definitely want to create a safe atmosphere where distance between schools and, and who's actually going to be there, what kind of fence there. So Reed's aware of it, that he, uh, we haven't done anything. And I made a commitment to, to get something crafted. So I'm going to give you my notes. I don't know if you and I correspond.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
Or, or, you know.
This wasn't noticed up for today, though, right?
No, it's not, so.
So I can take a look at it, absolutely, and get back to you.
And then we can just.
That works.
By the end of the year, we can put it on an agenda.
Wasn't that under our conditional use permit area? It was allowed, but conditionally? So we want to add some more conditions to that.
So how about, yeah, it's not noticed up. How about we all get, is it okay if I just contact you and reach out about the conditional use? Do you have that information as well?
Somewhere.
Okay, got it.
Well, and at the time, we'd actually motioned and had that six month.
Right. And the intent was to, to craft something there, but it never happened, and I'll take responsibility for that. But I think we need to get it done by the end of the year, so. Anyway, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, oh, no, that's good.
Did you, did you, was there one more?
Oh, city owned, oh, we can talk about it next, but city owned properties, just, um, we probably ought to do something on city owned property as well, access to it. Um, so there's no appearance of nepotism and those kind of things, so.
So an ordinance.
Yeah, yeah. We can put it on an agenda, because I know.
To discuss.
It wasn't on this, but.
Okay.
Okay, no, just back to gen items. Anybody have anything you want to discuss as far as today's agenda?
Can you tell us about the two fifty deal, what that's about?
Yes, yes.
I'm kind of confused what that is.
Yes. So, because next year on July fourth, twenty-twenty-six, it is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of America. Utah, in coordination with that, wants cities to become involved and do something with that. They are going to give cities that apply, this isn't anything like a first come, first served. It is cities that apply by the end of the year can get a one-time stipend of fifteen hundred dollars to help them with something. So, when I received, they talked about it quite a bit at the Utah League, and then I kind of let it lapse. And then when I went back on to look and realized we had to have it done, then I reached out to Matt because we have to have a resolution signed by city council saying that you are willing to participate in this. So, so, you know, and, and we don't have to specifically say they would like us to have a project if we do, but that's not, I don't believe, a make or break if we get the stipend. And Daryl Sheets is coming tonight to do a presentation. He's going to be, so we put him at the very end as a possible project, is participating in the Rees Across America, which is where they put rees on the veterans' graves at Christmas time. And so that is something, and so even if we pass this resolution and we got the money this year, they said we could still spend it next year on our Rees Across America. The money would just have to be spent by the end of December twenty-twenty-six. And he said maybe if this year, and like I said, he'll come and explain it, but there might be some things we could do this year, or if there's something else you would want to do.
But those are two separate, they're, they're not related. We're just saying we, there's a possibility we could do them together.
Yes, yes, that's a possibility of a project that we would designate and say, okay, you know, as far as our, um, America two fifty, that a project that we, we would like to do is Rees Across America. And, and he'll explain that, so I don't want to tell you more details than what he's going to explain. Or if there's something else we would want to do with that money. But, but I would, I wouldn't want us to miss out on that fifteen hundred dollar stipend because, because we can get it. And you'll see, you probably saw the resolution in the packet, that it's just kind of a general just saying, Hooper, yes, we want to join. Tonight when we talk about it, there's a little one-minute video that, that we will show you that kind of talks a little bit about it. They pass us out these little cards.
But the Rees Across America, isn't that every, that's every year though, isn't it?
You don't have to do it every year. It, it's just whenever you sign up for it. It's, so, so what the Rees Across America is, it kind of has a twofold part that, that people can come in and buy a wreath to put on their veteran's grave down at the cemetery. So we would have a, a committee that would come and do that, and Daryl will tell you about this. Sometimes they do a little bit of a program besides, but, but it's year by year. If you want to do it, you can. If you don't, so that would be something. They, they had this whole list of things that they passed out about this America two fifty Utah that they talked about. They want everyone on Sunday, July fifth, to do an Americas potluck, where you invite your neighbors to come. They're going to do this Walk Two Fifty, where they want every Utah to walk two hundred and fifty miles. There's going to be a, pen is mighty, or there's going to be a display at the Capitol. Um, anyway, just, just a lot of different things that they are doing. But, but again, the only urgent thing we have to do right now is just sign the resolution so I can finish the application to get the money if we want to do that. And, you know, Daryl Sheets had mentioned he'd be interested in doing the rees and would be on that committee. David Craig told me he goes back several generations, go back to, you know, war, and he said he would be honored to help with that. That if we want to use that money, people can still pay for their loved ones, but then that would give the city money that we could buy additional if there's no longer people living here that, you know, anyway. Um, some other things they do, like Washington City, I got this. Some cities are changing their logo for the year, like starting in January, whenever, that put red, white, and blue. So instead of having our Hooper City logo, we change it and have it be red, white, and blue. I don't know, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, so, so that's what it is, yeah. But like I say, we'll show you this little, you know, clip that they've done, and then, and then we can even talk about that more. Okay, any other agenda items?
So I know kind of a, not a hot button, but I know the Planning Commission wanted to have the auditor come in on the thirteenth. So, and we, we talked about it, so, I mean, it's on here for a discussion, so try out a discussion.
Yes, yes.
Oh, this is potential, yeah.
Yeah, so a couple of things that have changed since then, and as we talked about this, um, after, after this was noted, that it had been arranged for the thirteenth, we had talked in a staff meeting about what there was for the agenda, and they said, agenda items. It was going to take the hour, they had an hour worth of work for Planning Commission, and also, they had two, at that time, they thought two subdivisions.
But they don't now, right?
But they don't now, but they did. So, and we also had, I mentioned this with Darren, whereas we had discussed it, because all of tax increment financing trials will go through city council, that it would probably be appropriate to have it at a city council meeting, or better yet, a special meeting. So, because it will be the city council that will end up being able to decide that. I reached out to Tina's office, and they said that she could come on the twentieth of November. So that's one thing I wanted to ask you about, because November twentieth is when they're doing the open house up at Rocky Mountain. So I, and that's the scoping meeting for the SR one seventy-seven. So I thought that night, we probably wouldn't want to do a traditional work meeting because I think a lot of our residents, probably even us, would probably want to go to that scoping meeting. And then if that, if that's what you'd want to do, then we could have her come on November twentieth, just call it a special meeting. We would have to notice it as a city council meeting, but it would be noticed as a special city council meeting that anybody could be invited to.
The scoping meetings only from five to seven, so we could cancel our work meeting, but still have city council meetings.
Yes, yes, and that's, we could have Tina be coming seven. And she said that, and, you know, this is one thing that in staff meeting, that we had kind of talked a little bit about. Sometimes when we've had things at work meeting, you know, we've had a couple of like LRB, for example, came, or we had, and it felt like we got to the very end and we still had questions, and we had to stop the meeting and go up. If it's just a standalone meeting, if, and they said, you know, then, then she could have a full hour to present. Then if there's questions, that gives us a little bit more time after to even have the questions without us having to hurry to be done to do it otherwise.
So, you know, it's a special meeting, can we still, say we have a couple items, say you have some things for us to look at on these new ordinances, can we still take care of that business as well to push things along?
They would have to be, those things would have to be noticed up, as long as they're.
As long as it's noticed up.
As long as it's noticed up, yeah.
That, that was one thing, you know, when, when originally we thought, because we, we thought up until a day or two ago, there were going to be two subdivisions on the thirteenth. And the, the Planning Commission chair reached out to me and said, okay, who, who do we have wait? So do we have our residents that come to get something approved? Do we have them wait till her presentation's done, and then do them? Or do we do them and have her sit and wait? But if we, you know, knew, like you said, if there's only a couple of things, as long as they're on the agenda, we should be fine.
Yep.
So does that sound good with you? Should we plan on that on the twentieth? Just announce, you know, the five to the seven, plan on her being there on the twentieth? And then if you have things, we'll have them very first, I would assume, and then she could take, have the remainder of the time.
She's okay with that. I think we accommodate her schedule, huh?
Yes, yeah.
She's busy, so, yeah. If she's willing, that would work.
Yeah, okay, okay. Well then, if that's all right with you, then I will announce that when we announce our, um, announcements. Okay, let's see. Any, anything else that you wanted to discuss? Does it, and maybe I could explain a little bit, and then this will also be a discussion, so I don't know, I don't know what we should actually talk about here, or wait and just discuss, that the preparation for a new parks impact fee facility plan, is there, do you want to know anything about that now, or just wait and us discuss it? And when I went to the, the Utah League, I also found out that, that if ever we are doing impact fee studies, that we need to notice that we're going to start and impact the scope to do an impact fee study. And then when we have the impact fee study done, we have to publicly notice it and let people come to a public hearing before, am I saying all this right? I don't have the sheet in front of me. But there, there's certain noticing criteria for impact fees.
Yes.
Does that sound?
There it is.
Anyway, so, so, so we were at first going to just say, you know, that they were going to start on this, but then we realized that we have to, you know, let everyone know that we are preparing for a new parks impact fee. And so we don't have to have a public hearing right now, but we do have to notice it that they are starting the scope to do the impact fee study, then once they have that done, and, and we can even talk about this.
And they is J U B, is that who's?
Uh-huh, yeah, yes, and I had him kind of, um, then give me a few notes because I'm not that familiar. Because they were telling me this, and I said I wouldn't remember. There is a IFFP, which is an impact fee facility plan. And then there is an IFA, which is an impact fee analysis. So we have to, to notice that we are starting to do our IFFP, which is our impact fee facility plan. And they said, and so that includes anything that, you know, might be infrastructure, any of that. And then once that's done, and they come up with the analysis, that's when they would say, okay, on a one-acre parcel of lot, if you had a new home, their impact fee would be X amount. And then that's when you have to do a public hearing and let everyone be involved with that before we can adopt officially that impact fee. So I think that is all a little bit confusing, that, that's a little bit what that is. Okay, can you think of, of anything else that we maybe don't?
So I know the, well, on the discussion, I might as well talk about it if we're here, Planning Commission policies and procedures, so. Tell us your thoughts.
So, um, I asked if we could have some more time for that.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, Matt is, uh, the one reviewing. I reviewed it, I reviewed it one time, but Matt's, uh, he's taken on to review it since he's going to be over the Planning Commission. Um, there's a few, I had a few concerns, and I think it's good to do a thorough review of it. The one issue is there is in the procedure, gives any two commissioners the ability to put anything on the agenda. Where the Planning Commission per state code is a reviewing body, like they are a reviewing body, and they are appointed. It's not like the council, where the council is elected, and they have the ear to the city. And, um, they have that ability to put things on the agenda with their power and discuss it. Instead, it would be giving appointed individuals the power to do that. And not, I don't know the planning commissioners, I don't know any of them individually at all, so I'm just saying in the future, if there is somebody that.
Sure.
We didn't have the, that would just put something on there, that could get away from the council. So that's, that's just something that could get away. That's something that I would say. I don't know about giving them that authority and ability.
So technically, per our ordinance, they really don't need our approval to adopt a policy, is that correct?
They can adopt policy and procedures, but they would have to be approved by the council.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
And so these new, uh, policies and procedures is something they rolled up that's not approved by us as of the end.
As of the end, correct.
That's just something you're reviewing, we'll have to review it and approve it.
Yes.
Well, maybe they could just identify a procedure to put something on the agenda then. You know, something, just a procedure that would always follow as part of it.
I mean, such as, which is interesting, because usually the staff, the staff like Malcolm would be the person to, staff and Morgan would be the one to work. I mean, such as, which is interesting, because usually, the staff, the staff, like Malcolm, would be the person to, Staff and Morgan would be the one to work with the agenda for Planning Commission specifically. But, I mean, Councilman Wilcox noticed this up to put something on the agenda. That's a way that the council could put something potentially on the Planning Commission agenda, but we can talk about different procedures.
And that is how we do it, as far as putting things on the agenda. You know, we have staff meeting every Tuesday. Morgan will bring in the book and say, here's our upcoming meetings, and now, you know, she'll ask Malcolm, what you have upcoming on the agenda? And that is, they are the ones that end up doing that agenda. And just for way of information, so, when, when we receive the, the last changes on this, I did send those to Reed to review, and this was back in July. And so, and I know Reed had been working on them, and I had asked him a few times, and he said, oh, yeah, I'm still reviewing them. And I specifically asked him if we had to approve it, and he said, yes, it had to be approved by the city council. So, the last time I asked him, he said, oh, I, you know, I about got it done, and then, by then, we were switching, so then I sent it to them. So, I don't, I don't think this has been a matter, it's just sat in a drawer, and we haven't done it. I, I did, it was within a week, I forwarded that on to Reed, to be looking at that.
So, let us review and make some changes for what we've seen that helps, that's successful in different cities, and hopefully, we can add to it and make it better, so.
Can I just ask a quick question lower right here? You know, I brought this up before, but maybe since you're sitting right here.
Yeah, yeah.
The language in our action items on our agenda has evolved, I would say that, or gotten different over the last few months. And we've added the language of possible motion to the action section, instead of just motion. We've never seen possible motion before, until this year.
Right.
And, and I know we talked about, anything on the agenda could possibly be up for in motion or approval?
If we're looking at, like, the Open and Public Meetings Act?
So, it could be in this section, this section, or that section, and still possibly have motion.
Potentially, potentially, there's an argument for it, that it would still be allowed, but that is common. If we're looking at different cities' agendas, that is something that
Is possible language?
This possible language, it could be something that you, as a council, decide that you don't like, and would like to change, but it is definitely common.
One thing, too, you know, I had mentioned to, to Morgan, I brought her a couple of different, I mean, I don't know that this is something we even want to do, but, for example, I attended another city's, or, um, meeting, city council meeting, and they always, and so does the sewer district, always list possible closed-door meeting, or possible executive session, if ever you need to move into one. And, and, and we don't always have to, but I've noticed that, that they do that. And I thought, you know, that might be something we might want to start adding, not that we need to, but it is something. And another thing we noticed, too, is, at the, the other city's meeting I was to this week, they also had an agenda item, if they, if there were things that they didn't get a chance to finish talking about at the work meeting, that they had that as an agenda item, because I felt that, too. Sometimes, we weren't quite done, but if it's not on our regular agenda, we really should not be talking about it. So, I thought that, that might be a good thing we might want to add on, is, you know, if we're not done, then it could still be talked about on our agenda. Yes.
One last thing I want to bring up, when we appointed the commission members the first of the year, we had a huge discussion. And we said, later on, we'll button up all the rules to finalize what we wanted to envision and talk about. I think it's later on.
Yeah.
We're gonna cross that bridge again here pretty quick, and so...
So, I had asked to put it on the next agenda, the next meeting.
You did?
Yeah, I had asked.
Oh, good job.
I said that I could, we would have it reviewed and everything by then, so, I asked for one more.
Awesome.
Okay, anything else you can think of then, before we move back? Okay, you can go then, thank you.
All right.
There's some chairs, if we need chairs, back. I got some. Thank you. I couldn't handle three, I could do two.
Recording in progress. We would like to welcome you to our November sixth Hooper City Council meeting. I am Sherri Beenhem, I'm the mayor, and I will be conducting this meeting. We would like to welcome, and glad that all of you are here tonight. We are going to go ahead and have a pledge of allegiance by council member Fowers, and then a reverence by council member Heel.
Would everyone stand and retreat after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Director Healy, Father, we're grateful to be together, together as community tonight, as a city council meeting. We're thankful for the opportunities that afford us to meet in such circumstances, and the freedoms that we enjoy. We're thankful for our great country, the United States of America, for the Constitution which governs us. We're thankful for those that lead and guide us and keep us safe, for the armed forces, please protect them, their families, and watch over those who constantly keep overs. We pray a blessing upon our country and our nation, and upon our state and our community, that all will go well, and things will be taken care of and safe and protected. We ask a blessing upon those local authorities, our police officers in our fire department, that they will be blessed and watched over as well. We're grateful for all those who serve, those who give up their time and their talents and their energies for the betterment of us and the betterment of our community. We ask a blessing upon us individually and collectively, that we may abide in peace and harmony, and that we can find ways to build each other up and love each other, and treat each other as neighbors. We're grateful for all the heaven, and pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. We have a couple of upcoming events that I wanted to announce. We still do have some of our Hooper Tomato Day hundred celebration shirts, if anyone is interested. We have a few hats, some shirts, they are fifteen dollars apiece. We had a waiting list, and we've pretty much gone through that, and we still have a few extra. So, if any of you didn't get one, then see the office, come in during office hours, Monday through Thursday, nine through five, and you'll be able to get those. Another announcement, and hopefully that you are aware, we are starting to do a monthly newsletter that is online at our hoopercity.gov. And we will have that done, really appreciate our city recorder, Morgan Yeoman, for doing that. And so, keep up to date with all our current events, and that's also a cost savings by being able to have it online. And we can also do that every month, and so, if you haven't checked it out, make sure that you do. Another announcement coming up is on Thursday, November twentieth. Some of you, if you are within a certain distance, have probably already received a postcard announcing the scoping meeting of SR one seventy-seven. That is going to be held on Thursday, November twentieth, from five o'clock to seven PM at Rocky Mountain Junior High. And there will be representatives there from UDOT, from the consulting firm that's going to be doing the environmental study. And so, because of that, we are not going to hold our regular work meeting that night. That's the same night that one of our city council meetings would be held, to give all of you an opportunity, if you so desire, to go to that meeting at Rocky Mountain. So, put that on your schedule. And also, that night, at seven o'clock PM, we are going to have a city council meeting. We are going to have Tina Cannon, who is the state auditor, is going to come and do a special presentation on tax increment financing tools. So, plan on that, on those nights, we might still have a couple of agenda items, but you can watch for those to come. But for sure, her presentation will be on November twentieth, with that scoping meeting ahead of time, before that. The first thing on our agenda is going to be public comments. So, I want to just give you the ground rules like we always do. Come up to the microphone, state your name, you have a total of three minutes. Morgan will have the sheets that will hold up when your time is up. We ask you that when she holds up that your time is up, that you will please stop. I also ask for you to be respectful. We don't want any clapping, cheering, yelling, any of that. We ask you to be respectful in your comments. If you are not, or you do not abide by these rules, you will probably be asked to be escorted out. And so, we are going to go ahead now, and turn the time over to four public comments.
I'm Rukelsko. Dear friends and neighbors, I address you tonight as someone who loves the city and believes in its people. But lately, it feels as though we've forgotten who we are. The air feels charged, almost like the crowds that once filled the Colosseum of ancient Rome, cheering, cheering, and judging from the stands. In those days, the mobs roar for blood, could decide who would live and who would die, often without the truth of the story before them. We see echoes of that same fickleness today, as many rush to condemn this council, without first understanding what has led to this moment. And just like those ancient crowds, our passion can turn us cruel, and our fickleness can destroy what we claim to love. Take a moment with me, and look at these people up on the stand. These are not strangers, these are your neighbors, they are your friends, they are not career politicians. They are the people who sit beside you in church, and who volunteer at your kids' ballgames. They are people of character and conscience, and we, all of us, placed our trust in them to make the hard decisions to protect this city. Yes, the mayor was elected, but so were they. Every one of them took an oath, an oath of fidelity to this city, not to one person, but to the people. And that oath means they must protect this city from harm. The provision we are looking at today exists for a reason, so that no one voice can drown out the others, and so, the truth and ethics could always have a seat at the table. It is the council's duty, not their choice, to ensure that government operates as it should, lawfully, transparently, and with accountability. In our home of government, we have what's called a weak mayor system. This means the mayor is not an unchecked ruler, she is a part of a balanced structure, one that depends on cooperation and respect among branches. When the balance is broken, when interference, falsehoods, or unethical behavior threaten the proper functioning of our city, this council is obligated to act. To do otherwise would be to betray their very oath they sport uphold. This is not betrayal, friends, it's leadership. This council is made up of five distinct individuals. They are not bound by friendship, nor have they always agreed in the past. In fact, their voting records show independence and diversity of thought. Yet, despite their differences, every one of them has reached the same conclusion, that this was the right course of action for our city. That unity should tell you something, that you're standing courageously for what is right, even at their own expense. Even when doing so brings anger and misunderstanding, it should tell us that this isn't about politics, it's about principle. And yet, look at what they face, a mob-like wave of anger and insult. They are being shouted down by people who have never once come to a meeting, who haven't taken the time to hear both sides, who choose instead to believe whatever appears in their social media feed. The council hasn't played those games. They've refused, and yet somehow, they are the ones being condemned. People cry out for unity, for an end to the online hatred, but then they turn around and praise and elevate the very voices that keep spreading it. My friends, that is hypocrisy. You cannot call for peace while rewarding those who bring division. You cannot demand truth while refusing to seek it yourself. That, the truth isn't always loud, and it isn't always easy, but it's worth seeking. I hear a lot of people demanding that the mayor be given a chance to do what she's elected to do. I'm asking for the same courtesy for the council.
Your time is up. Your time is up, thank you.
My name is Kathy Verhoven, we live on Seven Acres on forty-three hundred west and over. We're across from Emma Russell Park. Our driveway is quarter mile, and our house is way back. The driveway crosses over Howard Slough, and Roy City has utilities along with, because they have water that dumps into Howard Slough at that point. In September, graffiti showed up on the Roy City Utilities, in the packets, there's photos. Since, on October twenty-first, Roy City has scrubbed the graffiti. It's been visible to us, and also to the neighbors, to the top of us. It is my understanding that some of the most effective methods of deterring vandalism and graffiti is increased lighting, surveillance, surveillance signage, and increased law enforcement controls. This is where, this is on Hooper City property, within Hooper City, and it's where the trail ends, for now. In addition to the graffiti, neutral assault, we've had three or four tires on a personal trailer on our property slashed, fencing damage trespassers on our property, and one trespasser arrested by police, all since April. Vandalism has also occurred this summer at Emma Russell Park. I'd heard that the AYSO trailer there was tagged, as well as their tires slashed. Just wanted to bring that to attention, and if there's anything that can be done with increased lighting, or, or surveillance in the area to curb vandalism and graffiti, probably by next spring, summer, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rick Wells, I live here in Hooper, and I think you guys already know what the situation is. Nothing's been done about it. I want to thank Deborah and Bryce, they both They both personally came to my house, looked at the situation, and they both had the same attitude. This is not acceptable. It's not within the ordinances, and we went through four or five things. This has been going on. They moved in Christmas of 2016, 2017, it started. The county people have been out. They've given warnings. You need to take care of the situation. They have for two or three months, and it goes back to the same thing. I realize that there's a loophole, and the people got a business license. I understand that. For restoration of automobiles in a slash agricultural residential area. But the other situations have not been complied by. The old mayor, Corey Green, went over there, told them the same thing years ago. You need to take care of this. All they did was give them the middle finger. I came in, I talked to Deborah, and she said, "Well, on this situation, they don't have a complaint about it. You need to fill out the form." I fill out the form about a week and a half ago. I haven't heard anything, but the situation is, the compliance people with the county already told them three months ago that they had to take care of it. And they told them, "We're not doing it." On the complaint form, I wrote down the ordinances, shows where they're out of compliance. And I'm just wondering, where are we at with the compliance people with the county? Ms. Mayor, do you have any idea?
That would be something I would have to follow up with on Monday if I don't have that access.
Okay. Because I know they work on Friday. They're working five days a week. But once again, I want to thank Deborah and Bryce for your concern with the matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't tell if that's, you can't hear yourself, it's a microphone. My name's Cassie Brown, and I'm a Hooper resident. I've lived here since 2007. My frame of reference for attending this meeting tonight is I've been a municipal government employee for over 20 years in another city in this area. And I watch things that happen in Hooper, and it reminds me of so many things that have happened in the city that I am employed by. And it makes me scared for the future of our city, or just concerned about some of the things that are happening. About 20 years ago, the city that I worked for, the city council, attempted a similar action to what you're attempting tonight, which is to take away some of the mayor's powers. It was referred to as a change in our form of government in the city I worked for, which it wasn't that. But people didn't really understand what the changes constituted, and so that was, it grew legs and it ran that way, right? And then there was a group of citizens that filed a referendum petition, and it put everything in that city on hold for almost a year until the petition made its way to an election and it was voted on. And it was defeated by the residents almost a year later. And it was just such a painful time for that city, and it took a lot of years for the city to recover. There's still people that refer to that situation now, almost 20 years later. And so I would just want to give some caution that before you make this decision, really carefully think about the long-term unintended consequences. It could be very damaging to the city. And if it's not based on some legal action that has occurred, or an ethics violation, or the mayor somehow violating her oath of office, you really need to carefully consider if you should do this. Because just because you can do it doesn't mean that you should, and that should apply to anything that we do in our daily lives. Thanks, Morgan. I just want to say one more thing. Just because people are paying attention to this subject matter doesn't mean that they're an angry mob. I think most of us don't attend city council meetings on a regular basis because we have voted, and we've elected, and we trust you. We know that you're reasonable people. We know that you want what's best for the city, and that's why we're not maybe actively participating all the time. But this is something that was serious enough that people took note and wanted to attend and wanted to participate, and we just want to hear what's happening and give our input. So thanks for listening and thanks for this opportunity, and I hope that you carefully consider your decision tonight.
My name's Kyle Cook. I only have three minutes, but let me first just say thank you for your willingness to serve. It is a thankless job, and many people don't understand how difficult it is. Having served as a council member for eight years, I do understand. And if I were to summarize my three biggest takeaways from my time serving, they would be, no one is going to like 100% of your decisions. A high percentage of citizens do not truly care about what is going on in our city unless they are directly impacted. And three, you get to see a different side of people you thought you knew. And I'm sure that goes both ways. I'm going to focus my remaining time on the third item I've mentioned. Now, I fully recognize that I do not know the entire story or how far it goes back, but based on comments from the community and what I've seen on social media, my perception is that since before the last election, animosity between some family members has grown into a cancer for our community. I'm not here to take sides or say who is right or wrong, but I can tell you that there are council members, planning commission members, and members of our community that have grossly misused words like corruption, unethical, and illegal. If you don't like what someone is doing, focus your energy on good ideas or creating value rather than tearing your opposition down. I was part of the city council that organized the current form of government because we understood that constituents expect the elected mayor to have a vote. The mayor has more meetings and has more interactions with constituents than anyone else, and it is common sense that the mayor, whoever it is at any time, has a vote or a say. A family feud that has worked its way into our community should not lead to a change in our government structure. Lastly, three members of the council will not be here in January, and citizens have elected three new faces. Because of the previously mentioned disagreement, the election results are evidence that the current tone of our certain council and commission members is not desired by the majority of our citizens. Do not change our form of government. Please allow the new members to see if they can change the tone and work together. If we want to throw words around, many citizens, myself included, could say it would be corrupt or unethical to make a significant change this late in your term, that your constituents have shown through the election results they don't want. And just as was mentioned before, the citizens do have mediums to counteract that if those decisions are made. And with everything that's going on in the world, I would straggly recommend not putting our city through that. Thank you.
She wants to speak in the microphone. My name's Kristen Craig, and I just live out of Fort Houghton. My husband wanted to be here, and he was unable to, so I'm just kind of going to read a couple of things. Let's see here. Says, "I would like to address specific issues pounced in motion to adopt the ordinance to shift, remove, and narrow powers and effectively modularize the narrow position of our government. I believe the move like this should be reserved for the most extreme circumstances, such as ethical violations, immense risk to city government or employees. Before any such action is taken, I believe citizens and candidates and communities, community members alike should be asking important questions." And so these are some questions I would like to ask the council. What specifically has the mayor done that warrants stripping the powers or changing the structure of city government? Do I ask the questions and then, or I don't know. I'll just ask questions if you guys want to answer. If you would like to answer, we would love to know. How does this proposed change benefit the citizens of Hooper? What risk does this pose to the city's stability, our residents, and to the accountability of the elected officials? If mayoral powers are shifted to the council, who exactly will receive those powers and what powers will they be? Why alter the form of government without a vote of the people who originally chose it through the ballot box? Why revisit an issue that failed to achieve unanimous support earlier this year, especially just days before three new council members elected by the people are set to take their seats? And is this the best solution to solve the problems, concerns that the current council is seeing? Why does this vote need to be taken place now? Wouldn't it better serve the community, get a fresh set of eyes on these issues with newly elected officials, and give them the opportunity to do the right thing? I just think that you guys have some insight on what's going on, and we just probably don't have enough information. And so we just really need some transparency so that we can understand what's going on. And so those are the questions we have. Thank you. She's trying to fix it. Apparently the same thing is ruined. I'm sorry. She doesn't work with us a lot.
We realized that right before the meeting. We will get that fixed. Thank you.
She'll be happy to help you.
Kristen only read a portion of what David Craig wrote, and it's posted on, I know, the Hooper Tomato. If you really want to see who this guy is and what his comments are, you really need to read what he said. "When I signed up to run, this position did not include the powers of a mayor. I knew there were problems amongst you six, and I felt that I could help bridge the gap. Now you're asking me to add the duties of the mayor to this list. I don't want him. This government here in Hooper was established with cool heads who prayed and thought this out and knew what would work. Two nights ago, 1,224 Hooper residents voted in three new council members who they have trust in that can help shape this government back into place. And now five of you, who do not trust the three coming in, obviously, are trying to go against at least 1,224 residents at the mound. The timing is horrible with an election that is over. We, the residents of Hooper, don't even know why, you know? Where's the transparency? I wish I knew why you're trying to take him from her. I don't. Vote as you will. We'll end this government with our hands tied. It's okay, because I've handled a lot worse situations than this in my life, and we'll overcome it. You'll still be my friends no matter how you vote. That's fine. We'll move on. Bottom line is, I totally disagree with what you're trying to do tonight."
My name is Cassie Belt. I am a citizen of Hooper City, and I would like to touch on, I may not have come to any of the meetings so closely, sorry, but I have actually been trying to take a more thorough interest in our city, right, and what is going on for over the past year. I've been trying to watch the videos when we've had them, being able to find them, things like that. So first of all, I would like to question, you know, I'm following along with Mr. and Mrs. Craig pretty well, everybody else that's spoken to. How does this benefit our city and our citizens, right, with removing the mayor's powers? I understand there are things that happen behind closed doors that we are not privy to. But where is, like everybody else has said, where is the transparency to the community when we have selected you guys to vote and represent our voice, right? So without that transparency, how can we know that what you're doing is truly our voice, right? So why now? I know this was voted on earlier in the year, and it was decided to postpone it. Why now? Instead of waiting for the three new council members to come in, to be able to truly understand what is going on and make a decision at that point where they're the ones that are going to be performing the duties, not you? What factual data constitutes the removal of the mayor's powers, right? Is it, sorry, delusion of duties, fraud, waste, or abuse? You know, and that comes back to the transparency for us as the community to understand why we're trying to do this. And then, so back to, so the vote of the citizens, you know, there was a poll that was posted. I don't know who posted it, but I looked at the results, you know, as of this morning, or, you know, it was probably about 10:00 or 11:00 this morning. And the results were not in favor of this vote, you know, to remove the mayor's powers. So I think that goes back to, you know, doing what's right, yes, for our community and our citizens, and how does that benefit our citizens? So, thank you.
Okay. If there's not any other comments, we will need to talk.
My heart's pounding. You guys' hearts pounding when you walk here? Oh my goodness.
My husband's the speaker. I mean...
It's like getting off the barriers, your testimony in Sacramento. Anyway, my name's Taylor. I'm a resident of Hooper out in Ross and Ranch. I had this whole thing I was going to talk about, but it's gone. No, I wanted to second the questions that David posted. How does this benefit the city? Is this, whether you have a family dispute or not, just like in school or your job, you leave it at the door. You are here to do a job. You have been elected to do a job. So put your feelings aside and do your job. And if you can't do your job without your quarrels with other members or family members, whatever it is, then we, the people, will have to hold you responsible because ultimately you are public servants. And it is our job to hold you responsible for what we elected you to do, your job, and we trust you. But if you're not going to do that, and do this two days after a vote with three new council members coming in, again, the timing is awful. It's absolutely awful. But no, the mayor is elected to do a position, and it shouldn't be a ceremonial position. It shouldn't be. You should have powers. So that's, I really, you need to really need to think about this. Is this best for our city, or is your ego going to get in the way? That's all.
Can we get your last name? I'm sorry for, oh, you have it?
No, I don't.
Oh.
Nelson.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. Mark Weeman, and I do appreciate what you guys are doing. Nearly 25 years ago, a small group of us got the city started and donated more hours every week than I could probably ever tell you. There's so much wrong about what's going on in this council. You guys, somebody's pulling strings, and you guys are doing a lot of very, very wrong things, in a lot of our opinion. I, for one, having poured my heart and soul into this city 25 years ago because I wanted to be something, know that there was a lot of us that didn't agree on many things. We had a big obstacle to write all of the documents for the city to start with, and we sat in that little old radio shack building freezing our butts off and sweating to death, ironing this stuff out, and you guys, you guys are acting like a bunch of damn kids. It's pathetic. I agree with almost everything everybody said. The timing is horrible. There is no reason why this should be going on again. I, I just, I'm just appalled, I got to tell you. It's pathetic. And I hope you get it figured out, and I hope you listen to what everybody's saying here, because if you choose to do this tonight, there will be ramifications to it. I tell you straight up. Just grow the hell up and get this city going. Let the mayor do her job, whoever the mayor is. Work it out. Work with the planning commission and put the damn plan in.
My name is Braxton Kelso. I wasn't planning on coming up here. You ought to forgive me because I'm really bad at public speaking. There's been a lot of counterargument to the proposal that's been brought towards the council and the mayor tonight. I think it's important that everyone should consider what has brought us here. This has happened three times that the council has considered this action, and every time the reaction has been, "Let's postpone it." There will be serious effects on the city. I don't think any of them, or any of us, really want that and even fully know what those could be. I do agree that there should be transparency, for sure. Everything should be laid out, and maybe not everything can at this time, who knows? I think it's reductive to reduce their concerns to a list of family ego telling them they're acting like children. They are adults. I'm sure they all have very, I'm sure they all have good reasons for why this has been brought forward three separate times. Now...
Now, I'm not going to say that I'm very good with government or anything, but I know, and I don't know if this is the right decision, but if, you know, we believe these polls online or what things are saying, those could be loud majorities, or you could find yourself in your own, with your group of people, and if this is truly an incorrect decision, then there are things in place, like referendums, and that will repeal it if it is the true will of the public. And I'll just leave it there because I'm scared.
Good evening. I, too, did not come prepared and expect to speak, but thank you for having me nonetheless, too.
Will you state your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Nathan Ashby, a citizen in Hooper. I believe that, I can't imagine a circumstance where all of you up there are serving for any other reasons than good intent, and appreciate your guys' service in that. However, I do think that it's pretty clear that this timing for this is not appropriate. I think that the majority of the citizens are not in favor of this. And I just think that that's something that you guys should really, really consider before moving forward with that. So, again, I'm a voice in opposition of moving forward with removing the mayor's powers and just hope that you guys will really take another look at that before you decide anything. Thank you.
Jacob Roplotta will make this short, just as I am. But, you know, I've lived here 90% of my life or more. Just recently moved back in January and built a house for our family. Growing up my whole life, Hooper was a city to brag about. There were so many good things that everyone was so happy about, loved it. In the last several months, when asking other citizens or people what they thought of Hooper, the most common word I've come up with or heard is embarrassing. There's a lot going on, whatever it may be, feuds between council members, mayors, whatever they are. It has led and taken away from a city that was bragged about often, and you never heard bad. But now the words I'm hearing is embarrassing and sad. Those are the two most words that I hear repeated when asking about, "This one's great city." "It's still great. I'm never gonna move. I have no plans of it. It's planned to be my home forever." "I don't believe splitting powers is the way to do it, to make it great again, to make it a place that people brag about and search out to live." That's all. Thanks.
Paul B. Kraft. I don't talk a lot either, in church. I'm half up here for Kami. I don't know if she's here, but I do know how my neighbor feels. And I know how I feel, and like many of these people, we have heritage here. It was my third great-grandfather, Gilbert Bellknap, that petitioned the United States government to settle out here in Hooper. So I, for the last 20, I don't know how many years I've lived out here, but people ask me where I live and I say God's country. And I still say that, and I still mean it. But, you know, I was fortunate. My father-in-law was the mayor of South Weaver for 18 years and council member before that. And he was a good old boy, but a good old boy for the citizens, a good boy for the developers. And many of you have seen what South Weaver's done the last 30 years. There's still farmland there, but a lot of it's houses, and that community has developed. You know, just how you can't stop people, people all live there. I recently, my company, I've worked for every city from Garland to South Salt Lake. Whether it's a big job, a public works job, that's normally all we do. But a small town like Bothwell, where it's a big project for them, and you'll meet, not the mayor, but you'll meet the council members. We just finished, we've been in Riverdale all summer, and you meet the citizens too. And they're all there. They all come out. And you see these cities that work together, you know? When we paved, when we paved the road a month ago, they're all there to see it paved, to make sure the citizens are happy. And that's what, that's what this is for, that's what you guys are here for. And so, I don't think voting the mayor's powers away from her is what the citizens want, regardless. And as I came in here at 6 o'clock, I saw the demeanor of the mayor. And had I been in her shoes, I don't know how she could have talked to any of you guys. But you don't feel it? So I don't know what's going on, but if something bad is going on, then people, the citizens need to know, and this can't happen. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ray Hancock, recently elected council member, or three. I was getting a little left out here, so I figured we were trying to. My biggest problem right now, and you're gonna do what you're gonna do. My opinion is not gonna sway you, but I really believe we're doing this backwards a little bit, and I would really love to see the order of this reversed a little. And I know part of the reason why we're doing public comment first is this could go a really long time. But it would really help the public comment section of this if they knew what was gonna happen before they commented. And right now, they're all kind of in the dark and don't really know, are there valid charges, substantial charges against the mayor? That's what everybody here would really like to know. Unfortunately, nobody does know that at this time. I would suggest, and I will pursue in the future, to get the order of this reversed a little bit to where we deal with the issues first and then take some public comment so that the citizenry actually knows what the heck's going on. Because right now, I'm pretty sure there's only five or six people in this room that really know if this is valid or not, and I would really love to see that changed. And I promise you, I will work towards getting this in better order to me because this, this just doesn't make a lot of sense to me to be doing it in this order. I think we, and I know it was changed a while back, and I'm not even privy to how it was changed or why, but we need to change the format here, people. This is not helping the public here because they don't know what's gonna happen, and we're asking them to form an opinion on it, which may be not even necessary. We don't know. So, my suggestion would be, hey, maybe we'll do some campaign reform. And also, I promise you, we're gonna do some campaign looking into in the future as far as length of time of campaigning and maybe number of signs and stuff like that because cities around us are cussing this stuff back a little, and I think we could probably do this thing.
Good evening. My name is Sierra Olson. I'm also a resident. I've grown up here my whole life. Most of you have known me since I was born, and I would agree with that. I can't even say that I'm either pro or against this addendum and this change because we don't know what it is. I can say personally that I attempted to contact each and every one of you and heard nothing back, wanting to know what the charges were, what the evidence was, what the reasoning is. It's not that all of us as citizens are against this, and it's not against Cherry, against the mayor, against the city council. It is what is best for our city and the fact that we haven't been provided any information, any claims, any documentation, any threats. If something illegal, egregious happened, we as citizens have a right to know what's going on. That should be documented, and if it is, why aren't we moving towards removal rather than just changing the duties? This is where we have a right to know what's happening behind those doors. I understand we vote you guys to represent us, but we have a right to know when asked what is going on behind the decision-making process. And what I am asking of you tonight, because as race spoke, we don't have a right to say anything after those decisions start happening during the rest of the meeting, is that you present the information and the documentation to us, give us as citizens an opportunity to look it over, and let us as reasonable adults decide for ourselves whether or not this is action that should be taken. That we have another city council coming in, but we are reasonable people and want what's best for this city, but we cannot decide that, and you guys cannot decide that for us if we don't have all the information that we need moving forward. We've been called angry mobs and told to put our pitchforks down simply for asking the hard questions and asking for transparency of this group, emailing each and every one of you for that. So, all we're asking is not to have a fight against each other, but to put the information forward and let us decide. Let the citizens make a decision with all of the information moving forward. We are here together as a community. Most of us were raised here and have lived here our whole lives. And I would agree that it's been an embarrassment to live here the last little while, and I really hope moving forward, we can do what's right rather than attacking one another. Give everyone the information. Don't call us an angry mob for asking for transparency. We want what's right for this community, not what's right for one person. Thank you.
I think, I really do. One thing about Hooper is you've got a, my name is Brian Rowe, okay? So, when you're, Hooper's got a panel of five people, city council members, and they control a lot. The mayor can have an idea, but the board of five control what happens, so they're very powerful. What we're doing now, or potentially what we've heard is being proposed, is to strip her power and then give it to the panel of five. Now, what's kind of weird about that? Out of a panel of five, three positions are being switched. So we've got into election, the controlling party's lost, and now we're switching it over. So now we're changing the rules, we're in a lame duck session, and they're open to do whatever they want. So how much damage can they do to the city between now and January when the new people take over? If there was true grievances or legitimate concerns, they should be able to be brought out to the public, make them aware of it, and then let the three new council members plus the two prior ones address the concerns. If they are legitimate concerns and not just made-up problems, then it can be faced. But here you've got a council stripping powers, losing control, new board members coming in, but it's putting them in a couple of months where they can do a tremendous amount of damage to the city. Because, I mean, so when you look at the optics, it looks like just vindictive, like they're just kind of doing this to kind of spike. And it's not really in the best interest of the city. I mean, if there really is a problem, build your case, let the people know about it. And then, there's nothing to be ashamed of, right? But you're making a lot of, you're changing the fundamental structure of the way our city governs by changing the rules, putting it all to the council. And right now, that council is people that aren't even gonna be there in a couple of months. So why would we do that? We wouldn't, unless there's other reasons behind this reason why that's happening. So that's all that I want to say. I just think there's some, needs to be thought long and hard before this happens because the optics are horrible.
I, as many of these people, have lived in this area.
Will you state your name?
Yes, Janet Price. And I have lived here most of my life. And I know some of these people personally, but I'd like to see person that's in question today has done a lot for this city over a long period of time. She has brought about many things that have been welcomed, and she's brought a lot of joy to this city. And I think there's a lot more to come, too. But to take something away without any knowledge of the people that it's representing is wrong. And that's what I'd like to say, is that I like what she has accomplished in the past for the city and for the community. Oh, thank you.
People that know me, I don't like doing this, and I hardly ever do it, but I do feel I have to do this because I live here and I love Hooper.
Will you state your name?
Yes, I'm Michelle Christensen, and I've lived here for many years. And I'm married into a family that has been here in Hooper, the Bees family, for many, many generations. But I think, I'm gonna state how I feel, and I wonder if that's how everybody else feels. Coming into this election, there was contention, and the citizens of Hooper knew there was division because of the contention of the siblings running against. And then you have people that were for Dale, then you have the people that were for you. So I think what's hard is, I feel like you never came in and had a fair game. I feel like you were under a microscope. And so, every little change or every little mistake, I'm gonna say, nobody's gonna be perfect. Will there be errors? Absolutely. You know what? It's a learning curve. You've never been a mayor before, and I'm shaking myself here. But I want to say, every mayor that probably has sat in your seat has made mistakes. I guarantee it. Nobody's been perfect. But I just want to say, as Hooper, we want our city whole again. And you know what? The next mayor that moves in down the road will actually make mistakes too. So the biggest concern is, is are we going to put, we know what the citizens are wanting. We want our community to be whole. We want it to be healthy. But you know what? If it's not something that is against the law or something like that, but maybe little mistakes, we need to just turn the page, or let us know what that is. Because I do feel like, if there is something serious, then we should know about that. And I do feel like a lot of us feel like we are in the dark. And so, if it is mistakes and you just aren't liking it, or pride, I know pride is an ugly thing. And sometimes, we ourselves, there's been times I never thought I had pride, and then I look back and I think, "I have pride." But sometimes we do have to realize that we do like to be right because it's not our idea. We like something else, but you know what? If it was just a simple mistake, we need to let that go and just make our community whole again, so. But I do want you to know, I appreciate all of your service. I would never want to be in your seats because I think it's, I mean, it's your damn if you're doing, your damn if you don't. So I do appreciate you standing up for our community, but I do feel like we need to make the right decision in order for our community, what we need to be able to move forward.
Okay, I'm.
Sorry, one more. Hi, I'm Jessica Smith, and I'm from Hooper. I did not grow up here. And I'm the one responsible for your emails being filled up, just so you know. I also want you guys to know that it's not just people from Hooper that are watching this. It is other city councils that are watching because you guys are setting a precedence. They're going to, if you guys do this for generalities and not specifics, they're gonna take this and do it too. You guys have got, you guys are setting a stage that you don't even know. It could, Sunset was here last time watching. I know there's other city councils that are watching. They want to make sure that you guys are doing this the right way and not the wrong way because you're setting a precedence. So even if you're not concerned about us, let's be concerned about everyone else. Because we can't, we can't just remove people because we don't like what they're doing. It has to be illegal and it has to be fraudulent. And also with this time, last time, there was a lot of, nothing was quite specific. There was a lot of generalities of, "Well, at this meeting..." There was a lot of generalities of, well, at this meeting, this happened. This time, I'd like you to have specifics. Because we don't want to hear about generalities. So please have specifics when we bring this to our attention, but don't ruin the form of government.
Okay, seeing no further comments, we are going to move on to our agenda. The first thing on our agenda that makes sense items are going to be the approval of the minutes. And this was one that council member Hill wanted brought back on. It is October 7th, 2025. He wanted these minutes brought forward for additional review.
Sorry, I didn't get to know.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say the wrong date? August 7th?
August 7th.
I'm sorry, I thought this.
So this is line item 8B in Boi. I know I briefly talked about this last time, but this was a couple of months ago, so if my memory is fuzzy, please help me out here. I'll just read the last part of this paragraph. This was a discussion of the Terrace Gotta LLC Development, section B. The last part of the paragraph reads, "Council members raised concerns about cost, resident impacts, affordability, and the need for more information. Suggestions included conducting a survey to get your support. No motion was made. The council agreed to gather more data before decisive." If my memory serves me correctly, that's not really what happened in that section of the meeting. We did raise questions. We had a lengthy discussion with Terrace Gotta about any things, including the fact that they didn't entertain any of the suggestions from our planning commission to change their project. We never really got an answer on that one, but I feel like some of the council wanted to make a motion on this project, and we were abruptly cut off, and we never did agree to what's printed here on the minutes. Does that serve me correctly? So I would recommend or motion that whoever does our minutes, go back and listen to this part of the tape and write and correct the minutes that are on this 8B paragraph. Because if my memory is right, I believe we, our city attorney interjected and said, "It looks like the city council doesn't have enough information and we'll just move on," is what I remember. Anybody else? What shouldn't have happened? Anyway, that's what I got.
Okay, so we can do that. We can have our deputy recorder review those minutes and come back to the next meeting with these minutes, and then we can make the motion to approve them at that time when you see if that was done correctly. Is that?
That's, yeah, that's my motion.
Does that need to be an official motion to do that, or is that just something that we can have brought back?
Just brought back.
Okay. Okay, we will plan on doing that. Okay, so the next meeting is the approval of the minutes dated October 2nd, 2025. Have you all had a chance to review those? Minutes, does anyone see any corrections, additions to those minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes on October 2nd, 2025.
The motion was made by council member Hill. Is there a second?
A second, yeah.
Second is made by council member Fowers. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next thing then, we don't have any public hearings tonight. So the next thing on our agenda is, under our discussion items, is we need to discuss the preparation for a new parks impact fee facility plan. So this was discussed several times during our budget meetings, starting approximately in March of when these meetings were held. On May 1st, Tater Stoffer, our city engineer, came and did a presentation where he talked about this. Our parks impact fee study has not been updated since 2003. And what goes into an impact fee study is, it is for new construction within the city. You first have to do, it's called an IFFP, an Impact Fee Facility Plan. And then they do that plan, and after that plan is done, then you have an IFA, which is an impact fee analysis. So in order for us to be able to do and begin this, we needed to, we're going to notice this, that it is going to start with this. One thing about this is the city received a grant in the amount of $88,000 to do this, to upgrade. This was a grant that was awarded through the Utah Outdoor Recreation. The local match was $17,600. This is something that really does need to be done because as we mentioned, the last time it was updated was 2003. And so as new construction goes on in the city, you cannot increase your impact fee without first doing this impact fee study. So this will be noticed that we are starting to do this study. Once the study is completed, then we will have a public hearing, and then you can come back and hear what that's going to be with the impact fee analysis and how much that will be per parcel or for building lot, or if it happened to be on a commercial, whatever that was. So does anybody have any questions on what this is? You know, at that same time, when he came in May 1st, and you'll probably remember this because we went over this quite extensively in our budget when we did this. And we have several of our impact fees that we have not updated. And so this is one of our first ones we're really working on to, because prices have changed. And if we do not have this impact fee study, we can include, and so we're probably leaving a lot of money that should be collected from new bills that we are not doing because of the outdatedness. So any discussion on this at all? Okay, okay, so we'll move on to the next thing, and that is on America 250. So next year, July 4th, 2026. Oh, and, well, we have had an amended agenda that does not include the oversized structures. Yeah, because we weren't quite ready to have that. I mean, so, yes, we had an amended agenda. Okay. Anyway, so July 4th, 2026, is the 250th year that America was, made a country. And so along with America, Utah has started a program that is called America 250 in Utah. And then they have done a little bit of a video, so if we can get this to work, it's just a short little, less than a minute video that we just wanted to play for you that tells a little bit about this program. So you'll see later on the agenda, we will be passing or discussing passing of a resolution saying that the city is going to be part of this celebration. There is a $1,500 stipend that the state is giving to every city that is interested. It's not a first come, first served. It's anybody that is applied by December, $1,500 by December 31st. And so we feel like this is something that Hooper would want to participate in. And we have our very last thing at the very end. I'll come and talk about a possible program that we might want to do. But some of the things they are encouraging us, there is going to be an exhibit at the Utah State Capitol. They are going to do a Walk 250 Utah, and they are challenging every Utah to walk 250 miles within the year. They are saying having us do service projects. They have talked about doing America's Potluck on July 5th, 2026, for neighborhoods to host gatherings, share a meal. And then we could also do some kind of a program where we have speaker services. And so that's what this is. It really is something to celebrate. So any questions, discussion on this? No? Okay, then we will move on to the next agenda item. The planning commission back in July had written a policy and procedure manual. At that time, it was given to our then-legal counsel for review. It is something that needs to be reviewed by legal counsel and then also approved by the city council. I don't know if any of you have reviewed this policy and procedure manual, if there's any discussion you want to do on it tonight? Tonight's just a discussion. If there's anything you wanted to discuss, I mean, it will come back again for another, once our attorneys have had time to review it. And so you will see this again on another agenda. But was there anything tonight you wanted to discuss with it? Council, what were you discussing about the, and adding, so if they're not able to put anything on the agenda for their meetings?
It's a little unique, sorry. It's a little unique. I need time to review it as well. It's a little unique to have the planning commission, where they're appointed body, and as well, per state code, they're a reviewing body. They review and make recommendations to the council. So it is unique to have to give them the authority, two planning commissioners to have the authority to put anything on the agenda. It's unique. It's something that you usually see powers for the council have. The council has the ability to do that because the council was elected by the people. They have the ear of the people, and they should have the authority to do so. So it is, it is unique for that. So my recommendation is that's something that could potentially get out of your hands. So my recommendation is to not have that. But we're going to be reviewing that and making updates and getting an edited version.
One thing that was discussed when we recently had our conference with the Utah League of Cities and Towns, there are some training specifications, so we might want to even add that to this policy manual as well. They're going to be adding on some additional resources for them to do for training, but we don't have those yet, but that will be something with our new legislative session. So, you know, I made a few comments, but if you'd rather wait and discuss this, does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss with this now? Okay, so the first action item then is the motion that I talked about with the America 250 recognizing and approving of the Hooper City Utah 250 Community Committee. And we have to have a committee established. I have talked to, and we'll hear someone coming in a little bit later at the end. Daryl Sheets is one that has volunteered to be on this committee. David Craig has said he would be willing to be on the committee. Aaron Mon, there could be others. But I think we have a core that we could go ahead and do this, approve this resolution. And as I mentioned, this resolution has to be signed and submitted by the end of December in order for us to get that $1,500 stipend. So do any of you have any questions? Hopefully you all had a chance to read through this resolution. Was there any question?
I think it's a, I think it's a great thing for us to participate in and a good cause.
Any other comments or questions on this?
Is there a certain amount of people that are supposed to be on each committee?
There is not. When, they did quite a, I attended the workshop at the session with the league, and there is not. They just, I think their main thing is they, they don't want to give a city the money if you're really not going to do this. You know, if there's going to be some reporting, we're going to have to do, you know, a project and that, you know, we are going to want to do, and then make sure that we are. And so we can always add more onto the committee, but we do have ones that are already interested in doing that. Any other questions, comments on this? Okay, if not, then is there someone that is willing to make the motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-06, Support of America 250.
The motion was made by council member Wilcox. Is there a second?
A second. Does it?
Okay. The second was made by council member Marigoni. Any discussion on the motion? This is a roll call vote, so we will put it down the roll. Council member Hill?
Aye.
Council member Fowers?
Aye.
Council member Marigoni?
Aye.
Council member Northrup?
Aye.
Council member Wilcox?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Okay, the next thing then is a possible motion to approve planning commission request for the state auditor's presentation. We discussed this in work meeting about moving that to November 20th. Is that something you would still like to have motion to do that with just that date change? Okay, so would someone like to make that motion?
I would make the motion that we have the planning commission, approve the planning commission's request. You have the state auditor on November 20th, city council meeting.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Fowers. Is there a second?
A second.
Second was made by council member Marigoni. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next thing on the agenda then is what maybe some of you are here for. We hope you'll always come to our meetings. There's just a couple of things that I would like to say before we move into this. If you look up here, each one of us was voted by the residents. And each one of us, I feel like, are trying to do the very best that we can. We are all good people. At times, we have had a communication problem. We have an amazing community. I feel like though sometimes we have let our differences impact this council and myself, and those differences have impacted you. I have heard people say, and I have felt the same, that sometimes now when people hear of Hooper, it is an embarrassment. I still do not feel that way. We have an incredible community, and it's always something that we can work through. I was hoping all of this was behind us, and like you, I don't know why we are having this on the agenda tonight either. I also reached out to the city council members to try to get some clarification on what this was about, and I also was surprised. So with that, Ryan, council member Hill, and I'm going to turn, I'm assuming either to you or council member Wilcox, because you were the two that have requested this to be on the agenda.
So let me just get some things out of the way. Number one, we've all been advised by legal counsel to not make any allegations or claims that someone has done something illegal without proof. We understand that, we get that. We're not making allegations that are illegal or without proof. Number two, we cannot discuss in a public meeting someone's character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual. That can only be done in a closed-door meeting. The next thing I'd like to just kind of talk about is social media, public forums. I love the fact that our governor, Spencer Cox, just a couple of months ago, came out and talked about social media. I want to read to you just a paragraph or two of what he said. It's on Politico. Utah Governor Spencer Cox, on Sunday, this was just in September, called "Social Media Internet Passion the Moment on NBC's Meet the Press. "Cox condemned the algorithms of social media and the impact the sites have on young Americans in particular. There was no question in my mind," he said, "cancer probably isn't a strong enough word. What we have done, especially to our kids, it took us decades to realize how evil these algorithms are," he continued. A lot of us saw that, read that, understand that, and for many reasons, I fully support that statement, that social media is a cancer on our society, and it's dug its way into our community. Just over the last two years, social media has become out of control, in my opinion. For that reason, I would highly recommend and suggest to each one of us, especially those that are run for public office, currently hold public office, those that are coming into public office. By the way, Larry, I do trust the incoming three councilmembers. I trust you, and I appreciate you running. Thank you for, I'm looking forward to working with you. I do trust you. I highly recommend that each of you that run for or hold a public office, that you get together with your families, immediate families, extended families, those that represent you as a person and as a representative of the city you represent, and get with your families and decide how you are going to handle posting on public forums, if that's something you so desire to do. Your family represents you, and you represent the city. In this case, the city of Hooper. It is one in the same. What your family says might as well be what you say. What your family says and you say might as well be what the city says, because that's who you have to represent. That's how I feel.
We're gonna keep, hey, let's stop. We're gonna stop. We're not going to disrupt, thank you.
So the question is, when you post something that's offensive on social media to somebody in your community, how are you representing yourself and the office you hold? As yourself a question. So those, that being said, I'll come back to that in a second. So we all know this fiasco started back in February of this year, when the city council attempted to shift mayor's powers to media on February 25th. Many reasons were given for this at this time. The firing of our attorneys was the big one. Others included forcing the sheriff deputies to change assignments, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not going to get into all the details. The other councilmembers are going to mix them up. That's fine, but I want to just focus on the underlying reasons behind all of it. And it was the inability to treat people with dignity and respect. You can laugh all you want, but that's what happened. I, I, me, stuck my neck out at that vote on the 25th of February and voted and motioned to table this action for three months, recommending that we either bring a mediator in or that we have a closed-door meeting or both, or some kind of intervention that would help us as a council figure out why we're at this point in taking this action. A vote was held after three months, and I voted ultimately no to remove the mayor's powers or shift the mayor's powers. A closed-door meeting was held before that vote, right here, and we talked about people's character. We talked about professional competence, and I truly felt like we had gotten somewhere. I truly felt like the mayor committed to me and the council that she would do better, act better, say better, and treat people with dignity and respect. I was fully confident that we could move forward at that point. That's why I voted no to shift powers. Councilman Northrup, join me in that vote. The vote was three to two. Yeah, three to two, but it had to be a unanimous five-person vote in order to take effect. Agreements were made amongst all of us, not just the mayor, to do better, act better, work together as a council, and treat people better. If that's different counsel, please let me know, but that's how I felt. Time went on, and things were better for several months. Then, just recently, another election cycle came upon us, and many of you know what has happened again. It was as if two years ago, started all over again. Attacks were made against political rivals. There was division and hate all over again, and not treating people with dignity and respect. Why is this okay to treat people like this? I found myself asking the question, why did I defend the mayor the first and the second time? Why did I stick my neck out and try and do the right thing if nothing had changed and we're back to February again? Wasted effort and wasted time for me and you to try and do better and work together and make things better if we were going to still just attack people every time a political election came upon us. Wednesday morning this week, I woke up and I checked my phone to see who had won the election. Of course, I'm very interested to know who I'm going to work with. Wednesday morning at 6:30, but the first thing I saw this Wednesday morning on my phone was an email from the mayor's daughter depicting the Wizard of Oz with Larry Gray and Sherry. And it says, "Laying duck, council. Thursdays both look a little different. Hooper has spoken, and they want these three. Quit fighting against them." And I thought, that's why we're here tonight. I thought, I wonder if Larry and Ray had even given permission for their name and their picture to be used to spread hate and slander current councilmembers and mock the campaign of another candidate. I wonder if they have given permission to do that. I doubt it. Again, back to dignity and respect. If you hold a public office, if you are a member of a family of a person that holds public office in this community, I demand dignity and respect from all persons involved, all parties involved. To me, that was not dignity and respect. If we have such great citizens in Hooper, why do they treat each other so poorly? I felt like, Mayor, that you walked back on your promise as we sat here in our closed-door meeting, that you promised to do better, say better. And I just felt like we hadn't gotten anywhere after all that happened during this election cycle. This was the first time in 10 years I've served on the council that I felt targeted and singled out individually and as a council member. Dignity and respect that was agreed upon is gone. Moving forward is gone. Doing better was gone. As long as I can help it, and I am involved, no person in our community will be subject to harassment, belittling, or mocking by a person in the city's service. It is not okay. Dignity and respect for all individuals must be demanded. All city officials, especially the highest elected office in the city, should exhibit professionalism, dignity, and respect for all people, but especially each and every citizen, whether friend or foe, or political rival. Officials should be above reproach in all aspects of the office. Now, what does that mean? Above reproach means a person that is free from valid criticism, conduct that prevents accusations or censure. That is above reproach. Every one of us that serve in a public office, especially the highest one, should be above I hope that was clear.
So I would like to make a response to that. We are the parents of seven children. Six of those children live in Hooper. My children range in age from 39 years old to almost 50 years old. I can tell you I love my children. I support my children. I cannot dictate to my children as an adult what they can and cannot say. They don't ask me when they post things. If you were to ask my children, I have said repeatedly on an occasion, stay off of social media. I have, I am no longer on one of the social media accounts in here in Hooper because it became too toxic during the election. I rarely am on the other social media account. I have recently started my own Mayor Sherry Bingham account because I felt like there was information that should be shared within the city about upcoming events, about road projects, about issues we have going on with our sewer, that I could use that as a voice. For me to be judged, and as I said, I love my children, and I will always stand with my children, I have not ever, as far as I know, treated anyone with not dignity and respect. I have not posted things on social media. I have been cautious. Sometimes, this isn't always an easy job. I answered a citizen's email the other morning at 1:45 a.m., but that was okay because I was awake, and they had a concern about a bill. And sometimes, it does not bother me. That is what the mayor's responsibility is. And I've had people say, is it hard being the mayor? Is it hard working with residents? It isn't. Because if you have a concern, then that's my concern. So I take a little bit of this, I'm surprised at this accusation, and I, and as a parent, and also now with adult grandchildren, I don't know how I can censor my own children. And in defense of that, there has been a lot of this that has gone on. My family has been blamed, and it's interesting, it's never my children are called out, it is the mayor's daughter or the mayor's, that somehow, there's always been a dig into the mayor first, when I don't even know half the time it goes on. So I can apologize for me that you felt that you weren't treated with dignity and respect, but Ryan, that was elder, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hill, that was not me. When you say do better, act better, say better, treat people with dignity and respect, I can say I do. I have been trying to do better, to act better, to say better. I feel like I do treat people with dignity and respect. Even if you don't agree with me, I don't feel like I have treated any of you without dignity and respect. And so I don't know how you can say I went against what I said I was going to do because it was one of my founding numbers.
Because you liked this post.
Okay, so stop, we're not going to do this. So let me explain what happened. My daughter has a personal Facebook page, and as, and whether it was poor timing or whatever, I like everything on my kids' pages, because as a parent, we do that. She sent this on her private post. What happened was someone screenshotted it off of her private post and then added it to other social media accounts. But I didn't know she had sent it to all of you. I didn't, correct? Did any of you get this from me?
I got an email.
But not from me?
I got an email.
Yes, but did any of you get one from me? Did I create this picture? So even if I like something on my daughter's personal page, does not mean that I sent that to any of you. So again, you cannot hold me responsible to the point that you have an ordinance to remove the mayor's powers because of something that a member of my family sent to you in an email. And I don't know about any of you, but as a 70-year-old mom, I no longer can put my 50-year-old daughter in timeout. I am sorry. She is an adult, so she is accountable for her own actions. So I think this is pretty drastic, based on an email you received, not from me.
And the email was received after we had posted the agenda. This action was taken before this email came out. This email came out Wednesday morning. The item on the agenda was posted way before that, and it had nothing to do with it. It was just confirmation of what had already happened.
So again, I'm asking the question, like I mentioned right to begin with, we were all elected. I was elected to be the mayor of Hooper. I'm not saying I have always done everything right. I have learned, and I have tried, and I feel like I have tried as hard as anyone. So to have an ordinance to remove the mayor's powers because of something I didn't do, isn't that guilt by association? And I don't know that that is even right.
Okay. Yeah, here we go. First of all, just to address some of that, I heard some concerns from all you, and I do appreciate your concerns. I legit, we do. First of all, we're not changing the form of government. This was set up effectively by Mr. Mark Lehman.
Hey, we're not going to say anything.
And it's a mechanism, it's a check and balance in our form of government. It's to keep everybody in check. And this is not about a family feud. Yes, we were elected to do a job, and I intend to do that until December 31st at midnight. There's no string pulling, Mr. Lehman. No one's pulling my There's no string pulling, Mr. Lehman, no one's pulling my string. I call it like I see it, and it's not out of spite. I know you guys want transparency and accountability, so I'll tell you a little bit about kind of what's going on in the city. And this isn't about character or anything like that, or any allegations. I, I voted for this in February 25th, and so I stand by that. And again, in June, I stand by that. If you want to hear my comments, you're more than welcome to go back to those meetings and listen. First off, I want to talk about our public, public works on our staff. We have an incredible public works department, an incredible staff. I see them often on Sundays out there, checking things, just, just a week or two ago, I saw them out there. They do an awful lot for very, how very few they are, and so I do appreciate them. Recently, we've had a tremendous turnover with, according to our size, tremendous turnover in employees, and that's where my fear lies. We've had three city recorders, I was on the planning commission for two years prior to this four-year, uh, appoint, or, uh, council term, there you go, thank you. And I've seen three, three of them coming up, and we're a great training ground for other cities and other entities, Davis County, Laton City. We do a tremendous job training people, we have a hard time keeping them. I'm very concerned about us being able to attack, attract new talent. We've, as a, as a council, we've approved positions and funding for, I think, two or three new positions we can't fill. And, uh, you wonder why, and I know why, I, I speak with the staff often, and I kind of, I, for the last year or so, I've kind of noticed that the morale is not where it needs to be. And I intend to do something about it. I'll give you an example. For our sewer, our sewer system is a unique, is a unique component of, of everything we do and operate. There's one guy that's proficient, one guy. There's another guy that could jump in, in an emergency and maybe handle some things. Those two guys have been approached by other entities and offered other jobs. So what's the ramifications if those two guys leave? You know, we're gonna be the world's crap. And that, and that's the facts. So I, I am very concerned about our public works and about our staff, and about the direction it's going. We need to protect these people, and we need to make sure we create an environment where they feel they can, they can thrive, and we need to attract new employees. We can't do that. One of the, one of the roles, one of the responsibilities that this city council would like to have responsibility over is, are the employees, and that's one of them. And I truly believe we need to step in. Hooper City's got a couple of flat tires, we need to stop, take a pause, clear the runway, and look and reevaluate what we're doing. It's not working, we gotta do something else. We gotta create an incentive, we, we gotta reach out to these workers and find out what the problem is. It's where the rubber meets the rug. We talked about building infrastructure. I'll tell you what we gotta build first, is we gotta build a group of employees that can handle the infrastructure, else the infrastructure's not gonna happen. Growth is coming, for sure, but we're going about it the wrong way. We're building the roof before the foundation. Well, we gotta have this, and this, and that. We gotta have people. That's where the city strength is, in the people. And these, these workers that we have, we need to retain them, and we need to get more too. We need to have a system where we can train them, so we have two or three people that are proficient in the sewer system. The other, the other thing is the budget. The notion's gone around, I don't know who started the rumor, that we're going bankrupt, we're gonna go back to Weaver County, that's a bunch of garbage. It's not true. We're not rich by any means, but that's not gonna happen. We have balanced, had a balanced budget forever. About two and a half years ago, you were, probably had an unwelcome thing on your bill where we approved, all of us up here, was under Dell's administration, so there were some council members that, along with us, we approved a utility tax. And we're really the only city in Weaver County, and there might have been one other that didn't have that. And we felt it would be a, a good opportunity for us to build up our, our public works department. The only thing that we earmarked was a five percent savings for the, for an emergency fund. So this council approved that. As we get doing the budget, it, it was like we had to reapprove it three or four times. We, we got, we fought and fought, and like finally we got it. It shouldn't have been, we already approved it, the last administration approved it, and it's done great. Dave Harris has done a great job on the emergency preparedness. He's done a phenomenal job, him and his team. The city council then, one of the duties would be, that's really the only two I'm interested in, is the budget and the employees. We need to have more say, we need to help implement some programs to attract good people, to make sure our budget is, is good. We don't know where that utility tax is being spent. We have no idea. We can get some out, it's going into the general fund. That money was set aside to help build our, our community, our infrastructure, our people, and that hasn't happened. So this is not being done out of spite, out of vindictiveness or anything, yeah, it's kind of a weird timing, but, but I'll be the first to admit, I wanted it back in February. And Ryan was brave enough to, to say, and I says, yeah, I still think the city council needs to be, have more say over hiring employees. I know there's a lot of tension in the office. I know that, I know there's a lot of tension in the field. These, these people need to trust one another, they work with each other, and that is not the case right now. So if you want truth and transparency, that is what's happening. I'm gonna quote Mayor Rob Vanderwoe, he, he posted something on his Facebook, or I don't know where it was at, I just saw it. And I'm just gonna read a couple of sentences from that. Elected officials such as mayors or council members play an essential policymaking and leadership role, representing citizens and setting the city's vision. However, when someone without business or management experience attempts to run operations directly, decisions can be completely driven rather than data-driven. Operational efficiency may decline due to lack of technical knowledge. Fiscal mismanagement risks increase, especially with large budgets and complex financing. Staff morale and retention can suffer under inconsistent or inexperienced leadership. These weaknesses can quickly compound the infrastructure strain, poor service delivery, and loss of public trust. What, what I believe we need to do, and this is my, my opinion, I think what Rob said is 100% true, we are, we are clearing the runway, we are opening up an opportunity for the city to separate those functions. And what I mean by that, I really believe we need to look at having a city manager that would take those functions that the mayor currently has, so he can execute the data, not the political agenda, but the data. And we probably have, you know, I'm so grateful, every time I call him, Morgan answers the phone, she's still here, and Malcolm, he's done a great job. He, his skill set can fit into that. Yes, they're expensive, but I think if we look at our budget, and look at the utility tax, the intentions that that was for, we can figure it out. And then we're gonna have this in our office. This is the way it should operate. Hooper has outgrown this form of government. We need a city, I believe we need a city manager. And so this, this will be a step forward, so there's no bias, no, you know, hidden agenda, and move forward. It might take six months, it might take a year, but I, I will say this, it's hard to learn and try a different route, because the route we're on, I'm telling you, it's not working. It's not working. And so for those reasons, I will vote for that. The only reason, the only reason I think, I think these, the council members coming in, so we've got Larry Ropelato, he's a businessman, he ran on being a physical, fiscal responsible businessman, yeah, he doesn't want the responsibility, but you know what? Mayors in the past, they weren't here every day, and the city ran just fine. We've got Ray Hancock, his motto was common sense. And then we got David Craig, leadership and obeying ordinances and doing those things and standing up for what's right. So I was elected, we were all elected to stand up and do what we felt was right, and to do a job, and I believe, in my opinion, and I still have a vote, because I'm not a lame duck council member, like I've been called, I don't believe any of these others that are going out either, because I will work harder than any of them, any of them. So that's my reasoning for this. It's not because I dislike Sherri, or this or that. We need to go a different direction. And if you don't agree, or if this doesn't pass, then, then so be it. I, I can say I tried, because eventually, you know, something's gotta give. You know, if we lose those two guys, or even anyone in the, in the office, if we lose them, that's an important thing, because we're really strong, and they do an awful lot, it's hard to replace good people. And I take value in that. That's the number one thing for me, is these people. It's not about a mayor that comes and goes, is out, we come and go, I'm gone. It's about longevity. So Mr. Lehman, I appreciate you starting this city, but I intend to put it on the right path, and I believe this is it. It's not personal, it's not a vendetta, it's just about smart leadership and business sense. Thank you.
So there isn't anyone that values our employees more than I do, and your, our employees will tell you there's not a day goes by that I don't think, what they do. I started volunteering with Hooper City in 2005. Now, twenty years later, I can tell you there is one employee that still works at Hooper City. So I am the fifth mayor. Did all of our other employees leave because of the mayors? Absolutely not. They left because they had other business opportunities. They left because maybe there was a different career path they were going to take. And, and I can tell you, we do not pay our employees enough. I am the first one to tell you that, that we don't pay our employees enough. I also agree that we need a city manager, but we're doing the cart before the horse. You don't get rid of what a mayor does, because you want to have a city manager when you have not yet put in the budget to have a city manager. I am one that has said, next year, if we can have the money to have a city manager, I'm all on board. You're right, not every mayor comes and works here full-time, but I can tell you, I am almost a full-time mayor. There is not one day, unless if I have a meeting that I'm gone to, or a family, something that I have to go to, that I'm not here in the office, and our employees always know where I am. You're right about this energy tax, I was not in favor of it. I thought maybe there would be room in the budget, that we could find money somewhere else. That money, and we had more budget meetings this year than we have ever had. Let me just address you real quickly. As a state of Utah municipality, we have to have a balanced budget. Hooper does have enough money to pay our bills, we do. There's electricity, our bills get paid every single month. But let me tell you, as I'm meeting with one of our employees that is so valued, and he spent quite a bit of time with me today, and he's over our sewer, and he came in and told me that currently we have no spare sewer pumps. They used our last spare pump. So in the sewer system, we have five horsepower, ten, fifteen, twenty. We used our last twenty, and we have no spares for anything else. He said they have sent one of those pumps they took off to go be repaired, and he said they will let him know in a week or two if they even can repair it, and if they do, it could take as long as six weeks to two months. And we have another pump in that same lift station that is in equally as bad a shape, and he said it is very concerning to him that there is not a backup pump. These pumps range anywhere from twenty thousand to twenty-eight thousand dollars. If they send it to be rebuilt, we could get it a bargain price for sixteen thousand dollars. He said they have another five horsepower that needs to be rebuilt. There is a ventilation fan that costs ten thousand dollars that needs to be replaced. We have a five-ton air conditioning unit in one of our section, in the vacuum stations, but we should have a fifteen-ton, because we are overheating. And why, someone asked me, why are our pumps overheating now? Because they are getting old. They're not as efficient, and so we need more air conditioning. Controllers are four hundred dollars each. He said, let me tell you now the bright news. We have three lift stations that do each have a new pump. He said, we did not put money in the budget to cover all of this, because there was not money in the budget to cover all of this. He said, and I can take money to go buy this ventilation fan, but I hesitate to take that money, because what happens if this pump fails? Not everybody on Hooper, in Hooper, is on the sewer system, but a lot of us are, and we are dependent on them. So I 100% agree. You know, we, we talked about it today with another one of our real valued employees. We don't have enough money in our budget. We, we put in our budget to give races, but you give a, a small three percent, five percent cost of living, but if our cost of living in our country is going up six or seven percent, you're still in the hole. And we put in there to hire another sewer person, to hire another parts. You're 100% right, we are down employees, but I, I take, I, I disagree that you are trying to make this sound like this is my fault. Because it was my fault, then why aren't all of those employees here that were here when I was here twenty years ago? And they are not, they have left for other reasons. One thing in July that we talked about was having a city council member come and sit in on, on our interviews, and that did occur. We did recently hire a new employee. I was not in on the interview, Councilmember Fowers was. He was called, that is a change that we have made. I did meet that employee yesterday, long after other ones had, because like I said, I relinquished then that responsibility to him. So again, when I read through this, and you are saying about the mayor shall not have authority to appoint, you know, hire, fire, supervise city personnel, or manage the daily operations of the city in any way, I think that's extreme. We can look at the budget next year and see if we can find money for a city manager, and if we can, I am all on board with that. But as I mentioned when they brought this up in a work session a little bit ago, to me, top priority is getting another sewer person. You are right, we need someone else in our sewer. So if I am willing to come in every day and be a full-time mayor on a less than part-time pay, I'm willing to do it, if that helps out the city and lets get the positions hired that need to be, and if we can give them more benefits or more pay, I'm all for it. But we don't have that money in our budget right now.
So I think you missed the point a little bit. I, I agree with all that, there's, there's high cost of maintenance, it's the execution of, of the position of employees. I, I'm fine, you know, you can do all, all the other things. I believe the city council needs to have control over the employees and staff. I've talked to good some of the ground, and the morale's not good, something's gotta change. So anyway, I, I agree with all that, that data that you have, but you're missing the point, it's, I feel we can do a better job than we need to.
Another thing I forgot to mention, is there are joys, checks, and balances in place. We have a person over HR. So if a city employee has a problem, they can go to HR. We have direct line supervisors over all of them. If they have a problem, they can go to their supervisors. The mayor is actually the last person in that line of authority if there is a problem. And I can tell you, we, we talk all the time, is there any problems I should be aware of? And I have not been aware of any problems. So again, I think that you are to say this, that I am somehow handling this wrong, is Is there any other discussion on this before a motion will be made?
I'll just bring up one more thing.
I'll just bring up one more thing. Utah State Code. Section 10-3B-303 allows a city council to take this action in any city in the state of Utah. And I just want to read this one section. Says, "The council in a municipality operating under a six-member council form of government may, subject to subsections 1C and 2, adopt an ordinance doing one of two things. A, removing from the mayor any power, duty, or function of the mayor under section 10-3104, or reinstate to the mayor any power, duty, or function previously removed under subsection A." And so, Brian, you mentioned the employees. And I know we've talked about that many times. This ordinance allows us to remove any power, duty, or function. Doesn't have to be all. It can be one, two, three, four, five, or six, or all, correct? Or at some point down the road, it allows us to reinstate to the mayor those same things that we removed for whatever reason. So I just wanted to clarify the language in the code, the state code, that allows us to do our job. And so I guess I'm looking for some discussion on that idea from the councils. Is that even a possibility that you would focus on one or two sections or one or two items, one or two powers, or all?
Like I said, I'm okay. I really think there's a deficiency with leadership amongst our employees. That's really the only one I'm interested in. Budgetary, I think we need to make sure money is going where it should go. We need to start planning for a city planner. But all the other stuff is great. I think, I truly believe that we need to get involved with the employees more. And we need to build, build back up. Because you can say whatever you want, Sherri, but I've spoken with the people and the morale is not where it should be, period. That's it. So something's got to change. Something's got to give.
I agree that, I don't see a reason to take everything away. I think just the things that we are mostly concerned about would be fine. I think that we need to do that as a responsibility that we're responsible for doing that.
You know, at the beginning of the year, we have, we approve and go through the different assignments that each council member will have. My feeling tonight is that if we were to meet back here on the 20th of November, having removed all the assignments tonight, then we give back to the mayor on the 20th of November those assignments that we feel would be appropriate in order to help.
Okay, we're going to keep back.
Well, inappropriate wasn't the exact word, but there are the correct word. But there are those assignments that maybe you, there are those things that there are concerns, we have concerns with. I have the very same concerns with. But I'd like to take the time between now and our next council meeting to review those. My opinion tonight is that we do remove the powers of the mayor, just like we have authority to do. And then we assign back to you as we would give assignments to the other members of the council as well.
So I guess my question to that is, then how do I ever prove to you that I am doing what I am supposed to do? Because when we met in July and when Councilmember Hill was going over things we discussed, and one of those he had said about was having more review on the budget, having a city council member help with the hiring, which we did. So I guess my question is, this is since July until now, what has happened differently? And at the beginning of the, it was talked about, if there's been anything I've done illegally or ethically or, and I'm hearing tonight some of the same things that you mentioned in February. I've heard other meetings in July. So what's going to make a difference, I guess, from November 6th till November 20th? How am I going to be graded then on if I am worthy to be able to get back some of my duties that I was elected to do to begin with? That's two weeks. So in July, as we've been working on these things together. And then tonight, what I hear is, I had a family member that sent you all an email that had nothing at all to do with me. I hear that the morale of our employees isn't as good as it should be. I agree. I don't think that is because of my fault. We need more money. And if our employees are going to you or you are searching them out, the correct channel should be they should go to our human resource person. If our employees are having an issue that needs to be dealt with, if they shouldn't go behind our HR person to go to a city council. So I guess that's my question, what outline that is for me.
That scenario has never happened. It's always me. I come in and I talk to them. It's, hey, how you doing? And so that assumption is 100% false. So let me ask you this. Are you willing to let the city council, that we all five feel the need to do, allow us to have leadership over the staff and the public works?
Brian read the state code or the state, you have the right to do this. I have never said you don't have the right to do this. And one thing I have tried is to follow ordinances. So I cannot say to you, take away my powers. I do not agree with you removing any of the mayor's powers. I won't always be the mayor. There'll be another mayor, and I don't agree with this. And I don't feel like you have given any concrete reasons of anything that I have done wrong that would justify you coming in, passing an ordinance to remove the mayor's powers in a six-member council form of government. And I hope all of you have had a chance to read this ordinance that they are saying, I will have no executive or administrative power. You know, I have no authority. I can't veto anyway. I already didn't have that. But they go on and talk about other things. And one thing it says in here, that any action, appointment, or decision made by the mayor that I have previously done, they can go back and undo. So does that mean that employees we have hired, they can go back and tell them, I'm sorry, you no longer work here? You're going to go change, well, I don't know. So I'm not even, yes, so no. I am not in favor of any portion of removing the mayor's powers.
Just for clarification, our legal team did write that ordinance. The city council did not write that ordinance. That was written in February, actually.
Yes, yes. This is written in February, but just a date change. And one thing about ordinances is, it would be nice if when we did ask for certain things that are in the ordinance, that we did know that that was going to be followed. That when we ask for something on the agenda, that that would be followed. That does not always happen. It would be nice if we had a working relationship like that. It would be nice if you followed those ordinances too. It would. I really, I wish that was how it was and how it had always been. But it's not, and we need to work some things out. We're not saying we're going to take everything away. We're just saying there's some things that we think we need to work on. And that is an extreme example of what can be done. We have no intention of being extreme. We're not out to just totally decimate the powers that you have. We're not that unreasonable.
And we have this, stop, we're not going to do this. We have talked about ordinances. We've talked about this quite a few times. And we had it resolved even in July. So I don't, this has not occurred. And I know you keep bringing it, but we've discussed lots that the attorney had told us to take it off. And so that's okay. So is there anything else anybody has? Is there anything you have against me that is, I've done that is illegal and ethical? What do you have anything against me other than you don't perhaps like the way that I have functioned as a mayor? Do you have any specifics or facts or documentation?
Again, we've been counseled by legal, and I'll make any allegations, but don't have a document to go along with it. So.
Councilman? I'm just going to correct you there. Facts are always welcome. I explained that to you thoroughly. I talked to four councilmen. So facts are always welcome. I did not counsel to leave out facts. My counsel did not jump from A to C with allegations.
But facts could be in our head that we've written these things for sure that are documented by somebody else, correct?
I mean, if you feel it's important to share, then that's your decision.
I'd be afraid to make an allegation. So I wouldn't, so. Anyway, one thing I do know as a fact is that we had talked about creating a department of finance, budget finance. And even to the point where the council asked me to be over that department. I went up to the bank, asked to be a check signer, did all the things I was supposed to do. And I, to this day, I have signed one check. And so something the council wanted to happen, it still hasn't happened. And that would be, obviously, it's a concern of the council of, you know, some magnitude, you know, finance. I would hope that I can fulfill that role that the council asked me to do as part of this as well.
And that is something, at any time, we've talked about that. Anytime, you're welcome to come in and sign those checks. We already have four additional check signers. And usually, it's a matter of bills needing to be paid. You know, I know you did that one time, do the presentation in our city council meeting. We're happy to have you do that if you get with Kami.
I would love to, but Kami said the computer system went down for a little bit, so she doesn't know what to do with it.
Yeah, so again, that wasn't me. That's a matter of working with our city treasurer and taking care of that.
So I guess, I mean, at this point, we can obviously amend the ordinance that's written right now by legal people and specify which powers, duties, or functions of the mayor we want to allow the city council to function over. Sounds like me employees, staff is one of those, finance probably the other at this point. Anything else?
So I think your reference seemed to number four then, which is the section 1-1-3D. The mayor shall not have the authority to appoint unilaterally hire, fire, or supervise city personnel or manage the daily operations of the city in any way. All administrative duties shall be assigned by the city council. Is that the one you're talking about? I don't necessarily see one that talks about the financial in here. That was number four. And you know, one thing too. At any given time, any city council members are welcome to come to the city any day and help out with daily operations of the city. You're always welcome to come in. We have staff meetings every single Tuesday at 10 o'clock. Any of you that want to come to our staff meetings are welcome to come. Like I mentioned, we already have someone sitting in on our job interviews. So it's not a matter of me keeping you out of this. This is a matter of having some structure of who's going to be responsible for these things on a day-to-day basis.
There again, I'll go back to the employees. I, the city, prior to your administration, they didn't need to be told everything to do. These guys are incredible. You give them an outline and they'll go do it. And that's what the public works directors for and the managers of the different divisions. And I know that structure is not working correctly for a fact. So we need to correct that. And I think they don't need to be micromanaged.
They are not micromanaged. As I already mentioned before, every department has a head. We have a public works director. We have a parks director. We have a road supervisor. We have, who am I missing? Sewer. And we have an office manager. So I don't know where you are getting the impression that I am micromanaging our employees. I'm not. I am here helping when I can be of assistance. It's not micromanaging. Well, we've already been here a long time, and we have one more item on our agenda. So does anybody have anything else they want to bring up? Any illegal and ethical, any facts for anything against me? If not, then what kind of motion did you want to?
I think we talked about the facts and the reasons why for a minute and a half.
Can we please have it quiet a minute?
Go back to why the attorney got fired in February, if you want to, you know. And go back to why the sheriff's office had to reassign their deputies. And we go back to those facts, but.
Yeah, we were misled or lied to as well. That's a fact.
But if you don't give exactness, I don't know what you're talking about. When you brought it before about sheriffs being reassigned, and we spent hours talking about the attorney. I guess this is my thinking. So you brought it, there were concerns in February, and we tabled it. And that was based upon having a closed-door meeting. I had wanted to have a mediator, had a mediator scheduled twice, and that was canceled. We had a three-hour closed-door meeting that at the time, you felt like it was something that was worthwhile. So in July, we met, and it was said, we've been working on these things. They're going better. I guess specifically to me then, what's the difference that's happened between July and now? I don't know.
It's from February till now, or actually from January 2024, or 2023 till now. Anyway, we're not going to go there. I'll just go ahead and make the motion that we adopt ordinance number O-2025-4 pursuant to state code 10-3B-303 that allows the city council to remove from the mayor any power, duty, or function of the mayor under section 10-3B-104. The sections we would like to remove are authority over the employees of Hooper City and authority over the finances of Hooper City.
Is the finances, are they listed here or that's something you're going to do in addition?
Thank you. And I would also motion to task our legal team to rewrite ordinance 2025-4 to state those two things only.
Okay, in silence. I have a question on all of this. As the powers shift, do we work alongside the mayor? Do we take over and the mayor is no longer involved? Because I believe, as the citizens have said, they wanted the transparency for this. I believe from February, July, and all such, that's what we were asking of the mayor to us, was the transparency of things that are going on with employees, things that are going on with finances, and the other things that we discussed. So if we make this motion, how does that, how do we restart? How do we? How do we all of a sudden shift and then have those people, you know, who takes this position, who takes that position? How does that even work? Because then that, if that's something that's voted on again, I guess I'm just unfamiliar with actually how this shifting of powers, what can go forward, and then how does it come back? And then also, it's been discussed twice, and that's all I was hoping for tonight, was to do a good discussion about it, because I do think more transparency is still needed between going on, things that go on in the big picture of hiring, finances, budgets, any of those things. We do get information about a lot of things. We get told about the upcoming events, we get told about a few things here and there. But I do think a lot of the times, we feel we're in the dark about major decisions. And maybe, and that was the reason I said no the last time on shifting the powers, because I thought, well, first of all, I don't want to take on the mayor's powers. And second of all, I just want to know if we could do better. And if some of the council members feel like this hasn't gone better, then that, that's why we're addressing it tonight. But I am still unsure how that transition works for moving the powers to the mayor to us and then back again. And I do agree, it's a strange time to do it, where the voting is all changed for this coming year. But I just, I guess I just need clarification on what the plan is if you shift the powers.
So the state code is pretty clear that it's the five men of council that the powers are shifted to. It's not just one person individually, it's the council as a whole that assumes the powers. The council can make assignments, simply so deemed, you know, for whatever, you know, duties are necessary, just like we're currently do, you know, some members of the fire board, some, you know, on and on. And so those duties can include supervisory duties over employees and finance supervisory duties over that. So, and to answer your question about reinstating, if the council so deems at some point to bring those back to the mayor, the same code allows that to happen. Or, like we've talked about tonight, possibly hire a city man, that would take over the supervisory duties of the employees anyway.
Okay, thank you.
So you made a motion, right?
I did.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so the motion was made by Councilmember Hill to remove the mayor's powers in a six-member council form of government, specifically with having to do with, is it this whole entire section? Section four? You're going to rewrite that?
We're going to rewrite the whole ordinance to only include those two things. But it's similar to section four, yes. But we're going to have to add a finance section, it is not in there.
Okay, so the motion was made then to have the attorneys rewrite ordinance number 2025-4, my glasses on so I can see, which will only include having to do with employees and having to do with finances. So if they do that, do you need to write that ordinance and bring it back for them to review it before they make the motion? Or how will they know what?
I have some.
So we need a table then probably for tonight until this motion is, until this is rewritten?
Correct.
Okay, so then we need then a motion to table the shifting of the mayor's powers.
Can I just get some clarity on specifically which ones in number four you're talking about? Mayor, can I have a brief?
With me?
No, not with you. I'm going to go out for a minute, I'll call you back. I'll come back, okay?
Okay. So we will move on to the next, can we move on to the next agenda item? Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay. We are going to move on to the next agenda item then, and this is on reefs across America. And we have Daryl Sheets that is going to come up and talk to us about this particular in his, I saw him come in, is he still here? Oh, yes, okay. Yes, come up and tell us the information on this important program.
I'm just going to give you one, I didn't have a chance to make multiple comments, but you can just kind of look at it. Usually for something a little more exciting. Okay, thanks for the opportunity to talk about, a great opportunity to, for the community to serve in the, to serve our veterans. Reefs Across America is, it's a non-proportional organization, it's been around for a number of years. We tried to do this a couple of years ago, it didn't quite come to fruition, so we're hoping that this year it will. Reefs Across America is a non-profit organization that places a reef on every veteran's grave all across the country, actually abroad, and actually at sea as well. It's all done by donor money, so it's little to no cost to the city. It's all volunteers. So Reefs Across America receives no government funding, and they recruit basically volunteers and organizers. And I have volunteered to be the organizer for Hooper City Cemetery. And from their website, just quickly, it says the core mission is to remember, honor, and teach. So in all we do, we strive to fulfill these core values by teaching, remembering, and honoring. This year, the National Reefs Across American Day is December 13th. It's always in December. They choose the day, we can choose to not do it that day or a different day, but I would like to do it on the same day that the rest of the country is laying wreaths on graves. So basically, on that day, about three and a half million wreaths will be laid on graves, on veterans' graves on that very day. We will be participating in that. We have about 450 veteran graves in the cemetery currently. That's a plus or minus, probably 10 or 15 from the last number that I looked at. And this, of course, is all done by volunteers. It's a great gesture for families, provides opportunity for the community to come together, provides opportunity for us to serve each other, rub shoulders with each other, and do a great thing to honor the veterans and also the families of those who have served this nation. We'll spread the word through social media, through word of mouth, of course, displaying information at the city office, at the cemetery, because we try to get people to sponsor a wreath. So the basic idea is, we can go on and, anybody can go onto the website. Sponsoring a wreath means donating, right now, there's $17 a wreath. You donate $17, and that gets a wreath for a veteran in our cemetery. We would love to have 450 wreaths. That's probably not going to happen this year, we'd like to get to that point eventually. The cutoff date for this year is the 28th of November, so we're short on time. But we will receive as many wreaths as we sponsor. So if we have 20, or 50, or 100, wherever that happens to be. The sheet that I handed out to you, we have our own website. So they've already, Reefs Across America has already created a Hooper Cemetery website. That's what that handout is, you can see on it. Has a website, so anybody can go to that website and, if it's Reefs Across America, the main page, they can click on Hooper Cemetery, or they can go to our own page, and those wreaths will come directly to us. I tried it the other week, we've got a few on there now, it works just fine. So that website is active and working today. So the cleanup happens about, at least the wreaths stay on the graves for about a week, and then volunteers come, remove the wreaths, and then we dispose of them. The only thing we really need the city to help with is to store the wreaths for about a week. They come by volunteer truckers, they come from Maine. All of these wreaths are created in Maine, and they drive them all over the country. The truckers do it out of their own pocket until they give them. So it's really a great opportunity for us to show some support for our veterans. We would just need a place to store those wreaths for about a week, and then move them to the cemetery, and then we will dispose of them from there. That's a brief overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Do you have any questions? We've talked about possibly, you know, like you mentioned, they do a little ceremony that we could.
Yes, thanks for reminding. We will do a ceremony before each wreath laying, so that, each ceremony has a wreath that has a dedicated flag for each of the services. So each service will have a flag, we do a short ceremony, and then we'll go to the cemetery and lay the wreaths at that point. So the whole thing takes a couple of hours to do it. We've participated in a few. It's a great, it's a great opportunity for each of us to come together as a community and do something neat for these families.
So does anybody have any questions on this? We have this as a possible motion to approve this, if this is something you feel like as city council you would want to be involved with. I think it's a great program. I've helped with it in the past when I was working at a mortuary. It gives you, you can come in and donate money for your wreath, or if someone, like you mentioned, wants to donate it for someone else.
It can be specific to a grave if you want to do that, or you just donate the number of wreaths, and that's how many we have to put out to the cemetery.
So that grave that we talked about, the $1,500, does that go towards this immediately?
It wouldn't have time for this year, because we won't get the money until after January. But if we, and that's what we kind of talked about too, if we just tried it on a smaller scale this year, and then if we felt like it was successful, then next year, when we did it, we could have that money and put it towards, then we could put it on graves that, we have some very old veteran graves in our cemetery that maybe do not have living relatives. So that would help us, we could buy almost an additional, well, we could buy quite a few wreaths to put on those.
If you go to the website, anybody can, it's a pretty cool picture to see thousands of wreaths laid across the underground. It's a pretty solemn thing to do.
Yes, someone's trying to make a motion. I'd like to make the motion that, to approve the Hooper City participation with Reefs Across America.
Hold on a second.
The motion was made by Councilmember Marigoldy. The second was made by Councilmember Hill. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We'll get working on this. Yes, thank you.
I'm ready. I'm ready to give some opinions. Mayor, I apologize. I have a partner, so it got really complicated real fast, and sometimes it takes a minute to think some things through. We could go forward with the motion. And that would be the law, we could still go forward, and then I can make some changes, but they would still have to be, the motion would still have to be specific. And that's when I heard the finance request there. I think we need some specifics, so maybe we could discuss that, on what those would be specifically, say what they are, and then we can come back with the actual ordinance, but we can make the motion today.
So are you saying we would make the motion based on the ordinance as it's written here, and then we would rewrite?
That's not what I'm saying. Just sorry to just cut you off. We've been here a long time, so I apologize. The motion that Councilman Hill made would have to be a little bit more specific, specifically with the issue of finance. And then I would just come back and rewrite the ordinance, but we'd still make the motion today according to Councilman Hill. And obviously, my advice is, this is legal, this is per code, has been discussed, and you have the option of saying no or voting for it.
I guess I don't know what specifics to talk about. Oversight of financial duties pertaining to Hooper City, you know, budget, finance, incomings, outgoings. How specific do you mean?
So maybe there should be a discussion on, because it's my understanding that the council still votes on the budget, and there's a decision. So is it just expenditures by the mayor? That those all have to go through the council, if that's what you're referring to? I think there just needs to be some more specific on what's being taken away there.
Currently, the topic is with our budget is, yes, the budget was approved and voted on, it was June 17th. Each month, we get a list of the expenses that come in. We have included, I know we didn't get that in this month's packet, because we've had some computer issues, but we have them giving you, providing you with a list of the check register. So you already are getting the check register, you've already approved the budget. What's other specific? I know you want to do that monthly with Kami. Is there something in addition to what you're already doing?
Probably council, correct me if I'm, you know, we define this, but oversight of the mayor's ability to spend expenditures from the budget.
So there already is an ordinance in place for that. And that is something I brought up with the very first, I brought it very first elected, because we already do have that procurement policy in place. So is it a matter? Because one thing, if you also go through, there are monthly bills that if they're in the budget, have been allowed to be paid. For instance, like the electric bill and all of those bills. So again, specifically, because there really isn't any expenditures that I am approving other than ones that are just the specific ones that we have that are already in the budget. So is there something specific, or I'm not sure what?
Well, again, my recommendation to the council is to approve ordinance 0-2025-04, shifting of mayoral powers and duties to the city council. We take action on that tonight, and then all, everything else, these particulars, as we discuss them and review them. I know we all, each of us have had areas that we feel need to be, we could do better with. And tonight, we will prepare to review this ordinance and approve it. And my recommendation would be that we do that, and then we can rewrite this ordinance as we, as we review these specifics that you're talking about, what is needed to be I mean, the idea of just tailing this and putting it off, I mean, you know, for me to even come here tonight for the third time, my thought was, we're either going to do this or we're not going to do it.
Okay, let's keep a quiet audience.
And, you know, the idea that, because this has been really difficult. I mean, without us, we know without question, in the course of the last couple of years, there's been some things that just happened that it was, it did directly impact some of our employees. It did directly impact some of our members of the council. And I think not just with the mayor's family, but with the mayor. And that's what brought us to this point, two other times, and again tonight. And this is on the agenda, that's my recommendation. And then, in the course of the next few weeks, I think, we all go over the, we know what the assignments are. what the assignments are, review the, the first year anyway, uh, what assignments the mayor's going to do, and what assignments the council's going to do. But, um, that's what's on the agenda for tonight, and I think that's why it was put on there, reacted upon.
Okay, so I'm not sure where we go from here. Are you making, um, so we had a motion made, but then we needed more clarification, so that motion couldn't necessarily be done? So does that, does that motion, do we even have a second? They didn't vote on that, and then if mayor, or council member Fowers wants to make another?
If we're going, if we're following the orders unless that's taken back from both councilmen, um, they can do that, or either say forward, go forward with their motion, that's, that's an option as well, and then we can go with you.
Okay, so we did have the motion, did you, did you get those specifics then, Ryan, that you wanted to put so he can?
Well, I, I guess I'm short on specifics, I would just say anything broadly to do with finance and budget in Hooper City. You know, that, that should cover it, right? And there shouldn't be any specifics, anything to do with money, finance, budget in Hooper City will be under the oversight of the city council.
Which it already is, because you approved the budget.
Without the mayor.
So, so what you're saying then, it could be, because I don't vote, I don't vote on the budget anyway.
But you could, if there was a time.
Specifically in statute, the legislative power cannot be taken away, so that, um, power to vote in case of a time cannot be taken away from the mayor. Correct, and that power cannot be taken away from the mayor for anything.
So that, probably kind of muddy the water. So back to what I just said, anything to do with the budget, finance, or money, expenses, income, et cetera, to do with Hooper City will be on the oversight of the five-member city council.
It's like I said, it already, it already?
Five, five-member city council.
It already is, you, you do, you are the ones that have approved the budget. So, so you don't need to have a motion to remove the power of the mayor's from the finance?
But why is the mayor approving expenses then?
Well, only the expenses that we are, or ones that have already been approved in the budget.
But you are approving expenses, correct?
Not, I'm signing checks, is that what you mean? So, so you're saying, Ryan, you don't, or councilmember Hill, I apologize, you don't want me to sign checks anymore, that specifically?
That's part of, that's part of the finance and budget department, is signing checks.
Okay, so that's one thing then. So you're saying then, to remove the mayor's ability to be able to sign checks?
I didn't say that specifically.
Okay, okay, what?
I said oversight over any finance, budget, money, expenses, income, purchases, anything to do with money and budget and oversight. That's what I said.
Yeah, I think that would.
Okay, okay. Okay, and then there was, as far as employees, do you want this number four the same, or is there something with that you're? Do you want to re, do you have his motion then? Is that, so this motion, but only to include number four and the statement you gave the attorney on finances?
Yeah, and would you read number four, of course, again?
The mayor shall not have the authority to appoint unilaterally higher, fire, or supervise city personnel or manage the daily operations of the city in any way. All administrative duties shall be assigned by the city council.
I, I feel that that is fine.
Like, that's fine, the finance one's just a little bit opaque. But that's my advice, that's my advice to the council, obviously if you want to go forward with that, your decision.
We have to reassign the resolution number again, the next line of order for this motion, since, since it's not the one that's supposed to be here.
I think this would just be amended.
Well, I would second what was read with the employees and council, what you explained, and Ryan, what you explained. If that's your narrative.
I think for a second.
Oh, you've already said it first, okay.
Okay, do you have enough, attorney then, to get that written?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion that was made by councilmember Hill, we have a second that was made by councilmember Wilcox. This motion does have to be unanimous by all city council members, I do get a vote. If it's unanimous with all of them, then my vote doesn't count, but anytime you are removing powers of the mayor, the mayor does get to have a vote. So we will start with councilmember Hill. Councilmember Wilcox. Councilmember Northrup. No. Councilmember Marigoni?
Will you turn your microphone on so we can hear?
Councilmember Fowers?
Aye.
The mayor? No, the motion fails. Okay, the last thing on our agenda then is, um, motion for adjournment, and will someone make that motion?
I'll make the motion for adjournment.
Okay, the motion's been made by councilmember Northrup, is there a second? Is there a second to adjourn? Second was made by councilmember Fowers, all in favor?
Recording.
Okay, motion adjourned, thank you for coming.